Good. Good evening and welcome, everybody here, everybody watching at home. It's with great privilege and pleasure that I sit before you today on this beautiful Tuesday. The date is October 20th, 2020, and the time is 4:31. This meeting is now in session. We'll start with invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Would anybody like to do the invocation?
Ron, did you want to do it?
Yeah, okay, sure.
Who'd like to pray today? Ron wants to pray too? You want to do both?
Let's bow our heads, please. Our dear wise and heavenly Father and loving Father, thank you in behalf of all that are gathered here today for your abundancy of blessings, including life, health, and sustenance. Help us to fulfill our calling, whether it's as governing leaders or citizens, and let us be thankful of the ability to be involved with useful work and for the honor of bearing responsibility. Thank you for helping us to embrace freedom and understand its responsibilities. Give us wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues, and grant us personal peace and work within our heart, to work within harmony even when there's honest disagreement. We thank you for everything you do for our community and for your continued protections. We ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Replace the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council. Agenda item two, citizen comments and public announcements. It looks like we do not have citizen comments and public announcements. We'll start with Ms. Bowen.
Sure, thank you. Just a reminder for everybody to, if you have the opportunity, if you haven't done it already, go out and vote. It's early voting until the 30th, and of course, November 3rd is the big day. And I would like to wish everybody the best of luck at the Jimwells County Fair, all the participants, and just remember to stay safe and just have a good time and enjoy yourselves. And also don't forget to, that our library is available. If y'all have the need, we have beautiful service there, so y'all can go out to the library. And that's about it. Thank you.
Mr. Molina?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a few comments regarding the charter propositions that are on the ballot. First of all, this has kind of been going on for some time. We've actually opened this up, I want to say it was 2019. Last year, it was August or September, we started kind of looking into all of this. There's a, there's a lot, there's really a lot to be said. This has kind of been an ongoing process. We brought in a professional consultant to come and advise us on this. He actually took over and made some recommendations. This is probably almost a 70-year-old document. I want to say the last revision or amendments was in '83, Michael?
'86.
'86, okay, I was off there. Back, and this is not something that we came up with just on a whim. This has actually been in motion for some time. I want to say for the last six, seven years, it's kind of been, kind of looked at and talked about. I was told a committee was created a while back, and they came up with some ideas and some recommendations. I want to say, was it '42, Michael?
It was big, it was like '38 or '40, I believe, when there was a...
Okay. Our charter is only 48 pages long or something like that, so I can only imagine what the ballot would have looked like if we had that many amendments on there. So, in this case here, we're just pushing for five. Rest assured, we're all looking out for the city's best interest. This was an item that has kind of been, I don't want to say kicked down the road, but basically landed in our lap, and we're actually, you know, acting upon it. It is costing us some money to do this. City taxpayer dollars are going to work to make this necessary change. I don't want to go down each one of the measures, but basically, you know, it was kind of updating and cleaning it up, making it more clear, getting rid of a lot of the outdated language. I remember when I first took over and they handed me the charter to read, I was like, "You're kidding me," you know? It was a big old book, it was, you know, it just had a lot of, you know, maps and directories, and I was like, it was really hard to make heads or tails of it. In this case here, we're going to bring it down to a more concise document where it's clear, everything's clear on there. Two of the items that are on the actual ballot right now had to do with a recall that occurred a few years back, but for the recall, there wouldn't probably be on here. It just so happened that there was a loophole that allowed somebody to get, you know, a person that would get recalled to just jump on the ballot the following month, and so we had to make some provisions on that. That's one of them. And the other is basically clarifying the quorum to where if we ever get below three council members, that we could still conduct business, words to that effect. So those are the main items. As far as the Public Recreation Board, according to the Charter attorney, it just doesn't, it just shouldn't be in the Charter, according to him, and we based it on his recommendation. This is not, you know, bringing a professional consultant into this, into this, or to help us out with this dilemma, kind of removes the human element, so to speak, because this gentleman came, highly recommended, he was very, and you know, and he wasn't cheap either, he's probably one of the, one of the only guys that does this, and he gave us a bunch of recommendations, and we picked the ones that were going to be the most pertinent, and they're on the ballot now. And I'm going to strongly suggest that everybody go out and vote, and that you say yes to these propositions. They're necessary, we wouldn't steer you wrong, contrary to what, you know, some folks are saying, you know, they're just, to me, they're just not informed, or they're just kind of giving some misinformation out there. This is all a necessary thing that we need to get passed. All five need, all five measures need to pass, and I strongly encourage you to go out and help your city. If they don't pass, we will lose, you lose, I lose, I'm a taxpayer as well. These measures, you know, they took a lot of time and effort, and then, you know, it cost us upwards of $30,000 just to put these on the ballot, and I'm looking forward to positive results, not just for me. There's no way, we're not actually going to benefit from this, you know? Heaven forbid, I get recalled, I'm gone. I can't come back for another two and a half years or whatever, you know? These are just minor things that we're talking about here. None of us are going to benefit from it directly, it's just to make it cleaner for future leaders that come and take our seats, and little by little, instead of 40, it's maybe, like I say, you know, one bite at a time, you know? But thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Molina, well said. Mr. Crisp?
I had something written up along the same lines, but I'm just going to reiterate a couple of points that Mr. Molina said, you know, and address a couple of issues, you know? You know, it's been asked as to why this time, why a presidential election? Well, it's been proven that a presidential election brings out a higher number of voters to the polls. More voters means a better representation of our community, and that's why we decided to put these on there. You know, these are five necessities that we felt, you know, through discussion in this room, we felt through discussion that these were the necessities of things that needed to be done, not our wants, not our needs. I mean, me personally, and I'm sure the rest of council, that there's other things that need to be addressed on this charter, but you can't really bombard. We didn't want to overwhelm the citizens with multiple changes. You know, the other thing that we're dealing with right now is misinformation, and to be honest, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Now, I just don't know if people are doing this because they're ignorant as to actually what we're asking them to vote for, or if they're actually doing it on purpose, falsifying the facts, you know, to try to get these to fail, to make this council look inept. When we have done research, these items have been researched, these items have been thoroughly talked through. We hired professionals. When Councilman Molina said we spent $30,000, he's not saying that's $30,000 to get it on the ballot. That was the work that built up to even getting it to be put on the ballot. There's a lot of professionals that came in and did this, and you know, for someone out there to say that we just pick things, you know, out of the air, and we're trying to make things better for us is unheard of. I'm not going to go through all of the propositions, but for the most part, they remove stuff that's duplicated by state law, they remove stuff that's against the law by state and federal law, they make us be, they allow us to continue doing business when we're short council members, they restrict the ones that have already been told, "We want you gone," from coming right back, and they move a board from one place to another and allow us to better manage it. Right now, we have a very inactive board because the board members are put on that board for five years, and if they don't show up, that's the way it goes. You know, there's nothing in this charter that increases the authority of any council member, the mayor, the council as a whole. There's nothing that will permanently restrict the citizen from being able to ever run for office again. There's nothing that dissolves a board, or more absurdly, what I've heard is them specifically say that we're closing the library through these charter amendments. You know, there's nothing in there about that, and the God's honest truth is, there's nothing in the charter that says we have to have a library.
That's right.
The public library is there as a quality-of-life service to the citizens, and there is a huge difference between will, the council will, the council has to, the council must, and the council shall, which is what it says.
That's right.
Right.
Okay? And the real truth, if the people out there that were trying to inform everybody actually knew this, it couldn't be said, but they're, I think, I feel they're purposely doing this in an effort to undermine this council and the efforts that we've put forward, you know? These five charter changers, as Councilman has said, I ask that you go out, as the mayor said in her live video, go out, vote for these. It's the first step in updating a very outdated charter. You know, if you have more questions, I know Councilman, Councilwoman Sandra Bowen has put it on her website, I think everybody else put it on their Facebook, it's on our Facebook, I mean, I'm sorry, on our City of Alice homepage, under News and Announcements, there's a sample ballot there, but it also gives you all the details of every single one of these propositions and the amendments to the charter, you know? Get yourself informed, don't hesitate to call myself, I'm sure the other council members here would be more than willing to answer any questions you may have. Reach out to us on, I think everybody has Facebook, and you can always send a message to anybody on Facebook, even if you're not their friend, it pops up and says, "Somebody wants to talk to you." So don't hesitate to do that, and we'll answer as soon as we can, and we'll get back to you because we're here to serve the citizens of Alice. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Crisp, well said. Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am. Just two quick comments. Number one, in looking at the charter amendments, just a reminder of the importance of the one provision on quorum, not only in the sense of recall, but God forbid, should there be some other circumstance that you don't want to see your council paralyzed in a similar situation occurred during that recall situation. And secondly, we won't be meeting until November, late November, and just a reminder, and as a commitment and the love that I know that everyone on this dais has for our library, that Family Reading Month and Week is coming up in November, and let us all, you know, with our families, commit to using our library and its many resources that we all support here, and continue to make it the great effective facility that it is. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And yes, I just would like to remind people, we're still in a pandemic, please be safe, be cautious when you're out there. I know Halloween's coming, we want to party, we want to do those things, but let's remember we're upcoming, we're coming through allergy season, which I know that's attacking a lot of us, which actually weighs on the immune system, and then we're going into flu season, and so there's a weakened immune system going into flu season, and then COVID, our new worst enemy. So please, 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 please do not just think it's gone, it's not gone, we have active cases currently in our county, and we have some zeros at times, but it's still there. So please, please, please practice caution. And council, I thank you for those words of wisdom. Often ignorance comes with lack of education, and we're here to educate. I love to educate, and sometimes I educate till I bleed, but that is in my nature as well as council, and I can't agree enough, whether you agree or not, go and vote, and these propositions, vote a yes, people, do yourself a favor. If for nothing else, okay, you're saying that we've spent this money, yes, we have, but you have too. So make it worthwhile, these are all things that are cleaning up something that needed to be done. So please, please ask questions, reach out to your council, myself, we're here to stand behind the decisions we made. Sometimes we agree to disagree and move on, and this is one of those, do the right thing, go and vote, and vote yes on all propositions. Thank you. Agenda item number three, information from city manager, coronavirus COVID-19 updates, multi-use center, Alice Public Library accreditation for state fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. The numbers for the coronavirus on an update countywide, there has been 1,533 total cases, and this is as of October 19th. And as of October 19th, there was eight added, and 400, eight added, 46 fatalities up to the state, 21 active cases currently, and 1,458 recoveries. So the numbers are still there, and like you said, you know, people need to stay safe and careful, and wear a mask, wash your hands, and those things. The multi-use center, as of October 7th, the Y officially took over the multi-use, and they're having it open for, I believe they're going to do swim lessons and working with the school on the things that they need and other interested parties, and so, you know, with COVID and with the summer and everything that was closed, they were doing interviewing and trying to get people hired, but they decided, a couple of people dropped out as they were interviewing, but they decided to move forward with somebody from, temporarily from Corpus Y, to come on over and open it up, so they have taken it over as of October 7th. Also, we just got a letter from the Texas State Library Archives Commission, and we got reaccredited, our Alicia Salinas Public Library got reaccredited for the fiscal year 2021. It's really important to stay accredited and to keep that because we get a lot of benefits such as interlibrary loans on books, grant availability, and especially the internet E-rate that we get for that, and there's a lot of other benefits, so I wanted to let you guys know about that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Agenda item four, discuss, consider and act upon approval of city council minutes for the September 15th, 2020 meeting. When ready, council may approve.
Mayor, I didn't see anything.
Okay.
I may, Mayor, I make a motion to accept minutes as presented for the October meeting.
Seconded by Ms. Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion stands as stated. Agenda item five, discuss, consider and act upon an ordinance amending the budget for the City of Alice fiscal year 2020, 21 budget amendment number one.
Mayor, what you guys have in front of you is a revised organizational chart along with some salary positions and adjustments that we've made. Our Finance Director Roland Ramos and I have been, and some other people, director's been working on this for probably the last couple of months, but the last two weeks, really, really intense on it, but this has been a work in progress that we've done, kind of started with the departure of a longtime Public Works Director, and that prompted us to relook at some of the, how our org chart is working and some of the positions that we have. And so what you have in front of you is the original org chart, the organizational chart that was approved on October 1st, 2018. The highlighted in yellow is what either has moved or been removed, and for example, you know, we had the library parks and recreation, we only had the admin part of that because we had the maintenance part under Public Works, and on the second page, on the green, we've taken off the maintenance, it's all included in there, so if somebody, the parks and the recreation and the golf course and the library, all the maintenance is done within that director. And the other thing we did is engineering, we've, by practice, we've had, and Roland and I have had that department for almost two years, and so what we've done is move it under administration, and it's still kept, we just had one department in community development, so we moved that there, and we're still splitting it, but we wanted to organize it the way it's actually being practiced by our org chart. Another thing we did is some of the Public Works utilities, we moved over the garage and streets over to Public Works utilities. It's kind of going back to a little bit how it was before, and those seem to be working, and the interim that we've done throughout the summer is modeling pretty much, I like the new org chart. And also, we, one of the things that we worked on that really intensely is coming up with, how are we managing some of the things that we're having a problem with, which are our purchase orders, our inventory, our internal auditing, and all those things. So the position that we have is bringing back something that we had before, the internal audit position, but also adding the additional duties of the really centralized purchasing. All the different departments touch RFQs and RFPs, and we're trying to standardize them, we're trying to make them, you know, have them kind of similar across the board, and also the contract negotiations and those things, putting it into that internal auditing position. So that was a created position, and we adjusted some of the salaries, but all in all, with some of the changes we made at the garage and the golf course, with minusing a couple of positions, we're still able to fund some of these changes without, and still have a savings of about $35,000. And to give you an idea of what we did at the garage, there's a couple of positions that are vacant, and we've been outsourcing some work, and the nature of what happens at the garage is, we've been doing it the way we've been doing it for 30, 40 years. Well, a lot of things change in the mechanic field and car repair field, and so some things have taken our garage department a long time to get done, and it's not necessarily the fault of the people there, it's one of the things that we don't necessarily invest in the software or the diagnostic tools and things like that to be able to manage a garage with the vehicles that we have nowadays, and so when we take it out to a repair shop, they'll have a car in and out in a couple of days, and sometimes with us, diagnosing the car takes a long time because, you know, we're trial and error, and so the efficiencies there, and we had put Demetrio, our Public Works Director, whom I'm recommending here for Public Works Utilities, he's been monitoring that for four months, and with the help of HR, we've done time studies, and we've made that department more efficient, and so the focus is really on the heavy equipment that we have to be able to repair, and outsourcing the things that we can outsource and still save some money. I have minus an HR specialist and created an HR manager, so we're still going to have two people there. The, also have the network technician, we're keeping that there, but I'm creating a network manager position also, so eventually we plan to have three people in IT. We've had, at one time, we've had two people before, we've gone down to one, we have two right now, but the reality is, is the things that we do and the technology that we're doing and the things that we're using, we do need to have three people there. And so in, go down to the utility fund, the Public Works Director position, it's that we're recommending to Demetrio De Vortey to be the Public Works Director of Utilities, that's on there, there's a slight increase on there, there's also a slight increase for the Construction Superintendent, we're moving the streets over to that department, and Joe Sines will be taking the streets. By trial run, for the past month, he's had some of the street crews, some of the complaints that we've had in that department where you have maintenance and construction is, we go and complete a job, and our guys that do the repairs on the water and sewer lines, they've got to get it done, and then they're on to the next one. They're not worried about, "Do I fix it, do I make it pretty, do I clean it, do I pave it, do I do anything like that?" And so what we did is we gave a crew of streets to be able to follow them and say, "Look, your job is not to worry about the repairs, your job is to make sure the street's done and the curb and gutters replaced if we have to break curb and gutter." And so with that, we were moving the rest of the streets department under that portion because they're, that, those crews are always out and about, and so I think it's going to work a lot better and help us get a lot of things done. And on the water plant, you know, we were having a long-term employee retire also at the end of the month, and so what we're doing is we're, the lead operator we have, who's duly licensed, is going to have both water and wastewater as lead operator, and so we're minusing the operator position and the lead operator position, and we're making that a superintendent of water and wastewater. And what we, we were just shy a little bit on that, so we looked at the chemicals, I think we budgeted in the $400,000 range for chemicals, we don't usually get near that, but we usually budget that, so we pulled about $25,000 from there to make that one whole. So all in all, those are kind of the changes that we worked on for a long time. Roland and Vanessa have spent a lot of time working on the numbers, and we've gone back and forth, it's been a daily thing, but this is something that I think is going to help us move forward and do a lot of things, a lot more efficient, and you know, help us, you know, get the things done that need to get done.
Okay. Mr. Burke, any questions?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Crisp? Okay, Mr. Molina?
It was about $37,000 savings, something like that, 36,800?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bowen?
Uh, no, we're good, thank you.
Okay. Michael, and I apologize, you may have, you may have said it, but network manager is where on the chart?
Well, I mean, it's not going to be, it's under IT, but it won't be in the organizational chart, it'll be in that department.
Okay, so under Communications.
Yeah, under Information Technology, yes.
And network manager, would you, what?
Pardon?
What would network manager be in charge of?
Really, that network manager is really what Roger's doing right now.
Okay.
He came in, we only had a network technician.
Yeah.
Position open, luckily he accepted that position.
Okay.
But I plan on moving him to the network manager and opening up the technician part.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay, got you, thank you. Mr. Crisp, did you want to?
No, I think, I think we're straight, and I was going back there and just re-crunching some numbers, but I think we're straight, and I appreciate the hard work put into this, and I'll be reaching out if I have any questions that may pop in my head in the future.
That's very well organized.
Yes.
Guys, great job.
Thank you.
It really makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Council, I'll entertain motion at the second.
I'd just ask on a motion to approve the org chart as presented, but also to include the Public Works Director of Utilities to be Demetrio De Vortey, and the Public Works, the Municipal Solid Waste Director to be Robert Getta.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the org chart as presented with the Public Works Director being...
Public Works Utilities being Demetrio.
Public Works Utilities Director being...
Demetrio De Vortey.
And the Public...
Municipal Solid Waste Director.
Municipal Solid Waste Director being Mr. Robert Getta.
And also the Budget Amendments.
Oh, along with the presented Budget Amendments on page three.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Molina, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion stands as stated. Thank you.
Difficult to state it. Sorry about that.
Agenda item six, discuss expected permanent police chief position qualifications, and discuss, consider, and act upon options for filling the permanent police chief position, options to include either an in-house process or a search firm process, and if needed, authorize city manager to negotiate and sign the necessary agreements.
So we're at that time where, you know, we do need to get a permanent police chief, and, you know, some of the big things that I think any police chief should have, you know, the ability to manage a budget, ability to manage a operations of a police department, know about criminal investigation and those kind of things, public relations, organizational skills, but some of the things that I'd like to know is, you know, what are you guys looking for as far as years of experience, police chief experience, assistant police chief, you know, a degree or not degree preferred, or what's expected, you know, what are the things that ultimately you guys are going to be approving, who comes forward, and so I get a feel from you guys, we're going to revise the job description, and on top of that, I'd like to know whether, you know, you guys want us to handle that from an HR perspective, which I'll say is typically a passive perspective to acquiring an employee or reach out to a search firm such as SGR, who I've talked to before, and SGR is one of the big players in municipal government for searches, and, you know, they're an active, kind of like an active human resource department, and have them help us with finding a replacement, a permanent police chief.
Okay. Ms. Bowen, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yeah, I do have a question. This outsourced, this other company, SS, what did you say?
SGR.
GR. Did we use them the last time? Didn't we have an outside source help us?
Well, last time?
Then we were looking for the police chief.
No, no. But we have used an outside company years ago.
Years ago, okay.
I don't know if it was SGR, I don't remember. If it was SGR.
And what was the cost back then? Do you remember more or less?
I don't remember. The cost right now for a search?
Yes.
Is $29,500. That's an all-inclusive cost, you know, like, let's say, a 12 to 50-week process, community engagement, you know, and they do the interviews, they get the, or they do initial interviews, get some finalists down, and then bring somebody that would be well-qualified and that would fit our mold for the city. And I will say, the benefit of a search firm is, you know, they may know people that aren't necessarily looking, you know, they have, I talked to them before, and I think the number was, you know, they have like 50,000 people in their network of emails and people that are in municipal government that are either city managers, directors, lieutenants, assistant chiefs, chiefs. So whenever there's a position open, they put that out, and then they start getting calls, and then they also know the people that may be looking but aren't actively searching, you know, they may be saying, yeah, if there was a police chief open, I would consider it, you know, from larger places. And so, I think there's, there is a big benefit to having a search firm, a professional firm, do that.
And how does it work with local people that would like to apply? They have to go through this firm?
Same, same thing, apply through them. And they handle all the paperwork that needs to happen.
Okay. Well, that's it for now, thank you.
Mr. Molina?
What did you say the timeframe was, 12 to what week?
12 to 15 weeks.
15?
12 to 15.
Okay. And for 29-5, what do we get?
Everything from community engagement, getting brochures done, sending it out, website posts on the internet, all the work that they do to weed out the applicants and see who best fits for Alice. The expertise of, they're going to have somebody on their staff that's going to work on this that is more than likely going to be a retired police chief. Like they have when they do city manager searches, they have people on their staff that specialize in that, that's going to be able to look at the qualifications and, you know, what we need and who would best fit that. And they go through that whole process, and then bring us some finalists.
What did you say about a retired police chief?
They usually have retired police chiefs, just like they have retired city managers on staff, and retired directors of Public Works and things like that. Whenever somebody's looking for somebody, that's who they go, that's who they'll have to work that process with us. And of course, they're going to want to visit with you guys, they'll probably be at a council meeting also to get some input, like, I'm trying to get here. But, you know, they'll, they'll do all that, and that's what they do. That's what they do for a living.
So they, they'll end up with, like, after the 15 weeks, they'll basically have, like, a handful of candidates, or three or four for you staff, or you to interview?
Yeah, they'll probably, you know, narrow that down, and I need to get more specifics on that, on that end part, but they'll probably come down to three or so. And, you know, then they're going to determine with you guys is, how do we end up with who we want? Do we do some interviews? Do they come into town? Do they visit with people and those kind of things?
Sure. Yeah, I'm open to anything. 12 to 15 weeks is not bad. If we put it on an outsourced, a search form, a search firm, kind of removes the politics out of it, right, so to speak. I don't know if I'm crazy about a retired police chief, that's just my personal opinion, but whatever works.
Now, he just leads the interview and search process.
Sure. That's right.
With his experience.
My opinion.
Yeah, and it may not, it may, I mean, you know, they're going to assign someone to us. And I know just from knowing how this firm works, they'll have the different people that have the municipal government experience, and so, they're going to have to have, when they're determining and somebody reviewing, they're going to have to have somebody that has law enforcement?
Subject matter expert.
To go through, you know, the qualifications that they need to have. But we could get assigned a former city manager, someone like that, that's going to work this one, that has gone through this before, but more than likely, they have several, you know, retired positions that assist them on this consulting.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Okay. Mr. Crisp?
In regards to qualifications, I know, you know, and some of the things that we would wanted to see, I know that several months back, we actually had this document put together that said, you know, years of experience, yada, yada, yada. I'd really like to see that one again, because I know we did have, we did have a list of that. I can't remember what was on it. I'm actually trying to go through emails, and I've searched through old emails, and I've kind of looked through, but I've had my tablet.
Was it the police chief or a city manager?
No, it was on the police chief was the one, when we first, when Chief Fettis was interim, and we were doing that process, we actually had it, and then we kind of reworked it a little bit, too. I want to say, so, is that it?
Well, if there's something to congratulate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, would we be submitting this to them, to the firm?
And you could, yeah, you could.
And that's what I was going to ask. That was going to be my next question, is, we would present this, but I would hope a firm like this would say, you know, these are some of the qualifications that we've also seen best fit, and they might come back to us and say, you know, these are some of the other things, or we think that y'all should adjust here and there, you know, because, you know, does that make sense what I'm trying to say there? So, I think?
Sure.
I think, I think, I'm full for an outside firm actively searching for police chief candidates, and presenting us with some qualified and vetted. I am not against anybody locally, obviously, applying for the job and going through the process with the outside firm, but I feel that it would best serve the community to have, basically, hiring experts assist us in hiring. So, I agree with what you, what your recommendation is. And I would like to see something, you know, it's hard, because this is 10 years of full-time work experience, five years of full-time experience with law enforcement, three years of law enforcement management, but like you said, yeah, you need somebody that can work a budget. You need somebody that has probably at least been part of a department this size. So, there's a few things here that I think that we need to actually dive into and actually bring you back a little bit more, but for the time being, I feel like reaching out to a firm is a good step one, so that when the contract is up with our interim now, we have at least some people in mind, so that we can continue the forward progress.
Yeah, and I think the idea would be to time that with the end of this contract, and it sits, the timing sits well with where we're going to be toward the end.
Three to four, three to four months?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Very good. Mr. Burke?
Yeah. Michael, were you recommending a firm, or you're just?
I was recommending SGR, I think, in municipal government there, I mean, I called Texas First, who is also well-known out there, they do more interim work, and SGR seems to be the, they're kind of the front-runner, and they're one of the larger ones.
I just want to add another different perspective on it. In my time here in the city, I felt, I feel and felt, that one of the best, one of the best searches that ended up with several quality candidates was when, this, I hate to say names, but when we had Randy Williams and Eschelman. And that was conducted locally by a blue-ribbon panel of business owners, corporate owners, financial people, who really had no political ties, and I think they did an outstanding job. And I just wanted to offer that as another perspective to look at it, because these, I've seen some of these firms in action, and I've not really, in the educational field, I haven't been that impressed with them, because you'll spend the money, and you'll go in circles and end up right where you started. You know, they'll say they're doing a worldwide search, and they end up with someone, you know, in the next, in the next town. I just like you to consider that, the cost of it versus what you're actually going to end up with, because there are publications you can do, global, you know, with the internet, global advertising and promotion of your opening, and I just wanted to add that, you know, to consider that.
Mr. Burke, where was that, how was that committee created, or?
It was created by the city, and then they did the interviews, and then they made a recommendation to the city administration that had, of course, the final.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll have to say, Mr. Williams was one of the best that we had. So, okay. Anything else, Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am, thank you.
I really, I like Mr. Burke's input, you know, that's different. I didn't, I was not aware of that, but I like the firm part either, you know, like we discussed, it's a political thing that goes away because it's out of our hands. You mentioned, you know, degree in education, Michael. I do like that, to have in there, as you have here, a bachelor's degree, or equivalent, as preferred but not required. I, I'm all about education, and I think when somebody, somebody takes that step to commit themselves to a degree, it shows a whole lot of different character from a person in this position especially. I like that a lot, where a degree would be, would be required instead of preferred but not required, if possible. I mean, firms have access to so many, so many, so many people. I just, I feel like this, I've always felt, you know, this position is such an important position. Unfortunately, we, as this counsel, sitting beside me, we haven't had great longevity with our input. So I'm willing to do something different, and it sounds like, you know, just going outside of the box and doing something different. I know you have some great things on here. Yes, sir?
If you don't mind, I question the years of experience. I know we have great officers, and I know that they're being trained excessively well, and they're being educated, but, I mean, and not being in that department, do we feel that 10 years, five years, and three years?
Yeah.
Really meet those minimums? So, when we reach out to, yes, go ahead, please.
And to comment on what Mr. Burke said, and what the mayor said, and kind of lead into that, is that the way we had done it is, we had a search firm bring a list of candidates to a blue-ribbon commission, as Mr. Burke has said.
Gotcha.
They were actual business owners here in town, and important business owners here in town. We also had the director of the hospital, I believe, at the time, on the committee. And then they made a selection and narrowed it down to, I can't remember, it was five candidates or three candidates. Then they had a public meet, your candidates meeting, where those individuals were, came and were able to visit with members of the community and members of the council, with everybody there. And then the council made a determination based upon those finalists, and it worked very well, as Mr. Burke said. It worked very well.
Yeah, that's, that's a neat, I'm not opposed to that.
And that in regards to what Mr. Crisp was saying, is that we gave very general directions to the search firm, we want somebody who will be able to do these things. We want somebody that has this basic experience in those types of things. And then, they brought those that were the closest matches to the areas, and I believe we spent maybe $20,000 on the search firm. I can't remember offhand, but I know it was more than.
We were, we were sitting on there before, and I believe it was SGR that we used.
And it was, so it was still a combination of the two?
Well, no, I mean, that's what they did. They, they brought the stakeholders together and introduced them. So they were the ones that were.
Still hire the firm, but then it goes through the vetting process, through this other committee.
Yeah.
The committee that is local, and that knows our local needs, and.
I mean, that would be something, I still think we could start the process with the firm.
Yeah.
And then really evaluate, and maybe everybody chew on the idea of who they would recommend for a committee.
Well, like he said, the city appointed them, so even, like, taking even us out of the realm, and letting city staff do the appointments, so that it doesn't become that political creepy.
Well, that was, that was my question, who was the one that chooses these business owners and firms?
City staff, right, Mr. Burke? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think, I think it was a combination. I mean, there were some recommendations made. You know, there was, yeah, like.
I think it was our city manager and the search firm.
With some recommendations also.
From council. And they came up with, and they did, and, you know, like, comparable business owners that we have now would be like Mr. Finley, you know, we have a new director at the hospital, they could be involved in those types of, in that type of thing.
Yeah.
You've got Endine still in town.
Yes, sir.
You've got Dixie still in town, and those types of businesses, they sat down and they, they gave their input, and then they were given an opportunity to bring those individuals to the community. And, you know, some of their, and let's say, as Mr. Burke said, the blue-ribbon panel were at that meeting, it was over here at Hampton, I believe, and they brought them in, and actually, there was a pretty big turnout of people to come meet these guys. And no offense, there were no women candidates, but there could be, our finalists, but there could be. I just say, meet these, meet these individuals, let's say that.
We had a few women that applied.
Was that necessary, Mr. Lemon?
No, well, I just saw kind of a look from.
But no, so, I like the idea.
That's honestly a great input, Mr. Burke, I think that's amazing.
I think it's great, too, and my other question would be, you said it was 29-5 for this, this firm, but if they're going to be assisting the committee, do we still have to pay the whole 20, 20?
Assistant.
I think it's going to be the same.
Oh, you said they would work together?
Well, what?
They're presenting to the committee.
They're presenting to the committee.
So instead of it coming to us?
They're still picking.
Oh, we're still going to have them.
They're still picking the candidates, so they're vetting the candidates.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought I heard you say that they were going to be working with them on.
Well, they will.
No, I said it's a kind of a combination of the two.
Combination, okay.
Yeah, and so basically, the committee that Burke brings forward, that John talks about, and that we're hearing.
Takes the people from.
Kind of puts it before us.
Okay.
And then they come to us, instead of it being like, remember last time, it was, it was Mike, I want to say it was, it was the city manager, the finance director, and interim?
Yes, yes.
Or, no, it wasn't the interim, it was somebody else. I can't remember who it was, but there were three in staff.
Yeah.
And it would take it from being in staff to this committee that has been.
And that was just staff, but this is taking it to another level with business leaders, which I think that's a great.
That's the stakeholder engagement part that they offer.
Yeah.
So what Councilman Burke is taking it from when, when they did all this work, and I want to say it was SGR that we used, I know, but when all the work got done, and then the finalists came in, that the blue-ribbon committee that Councilman Burke's talking about, that was the citizen engagement, the stakeholder engagement, and that's where they all came and got to meet people, and that was when it was.
I think that's one of the things we demand. I don't think it was one of the things, because generally, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I want to be certain, and if you guys want that to occur, you tell them they're doing it.
Right, we have to tell them in advance, to make sure that they're.
You tell them they're doing it. You just don't want to leave any, any mischievous things, but that's what you want to do. You don't have to do it in that fashion.
Yeah.
But if that's what you wanted to do, I'd say you just do it.
I think it would be worth asking, if they would, and if it would cost more, because it would have to deal with another group of people.
I like the idea.
No, what do you think? No, you hate it?
Hate all of them.
You want to pick?
No, just an innocent observation.
Oh, okay, awesome.
She said awesome.
So she's talking to me.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Innocent observation, because I know you said, well, and if it's somebody local, then it's somebody local, but I think it just destroys the whole purpose of paying 30 grand, then you hire somebody local.
No, it's not.
They're not hired, they're selected and volunteers.
They're selected volunteers that are going to just be a committee?
Yeah.
That evaluates who S.
Who they pick first.
Who they pick.
So the firm will still do.
I know, I know, but, but what, what we're saying is that it could be somebody local that we end up, you know, hiring.
I mean, if, if SGR presents it to us, it's the same difference.
It could happen.
They manage the process, the whole, the whole process on the hiring.
I know, I know, but what I'm saying is that, that person's been here under our nose the whole time.
Could be.
We're going to spend $30,000 for them to bring them to us.
But they've been, but it's been vetted that they, that they better their list of candidates.
No, I, I understand.
You see, I'm saying so, so.
I understand that part, I just like, if we end up with somebody here locally, which I'm, I'm fine with whatever.
We could have just searched ourselves.
But I'm just saying like, wow, that, that's my observation.
But, but the thing that you present to the citizens of the community is, we didn't just search local.
The transparency of the.
The transparency of the search is, we actually offered it up to everybody and they actively looked at everybody and said that our people are better for us. So that's the big, that's the big difference.
Yeah, but then, but, but.
You can always say, Mr. Molina, that you don't want anybody from here.
No, but what I'm saying is that, no.
The zip code is 78332, they're not allowed.
No, what I'm saying is that if, I know we're talking about, you know, taking our, our human element out of it, right? The political part of it, you know?
Right.
And when they bring it all back to us and then we bring it in front of these city owners, or, I'm sorry, these, these company folks. You know, that's, to me, that's where it gets kind of hazy for me, you know, because.
And you're right.
You know, I mean, no offense, but, well, you know, what does a president of, of a big corporation know about a police chief? I don't know, I'm just being honest, you know, I mean, you know.
I think that would bring the needs of the community, because they're, uh, community leaders, so to speak, and have run businesses in this, in this city for however long, whoever is chosen. And that could be something that council decides, you know, these people need to be in business however long or whatever. But, you know, you know, like when you hire people, you.
And then you want to. Yeah, but, but, I mean, I'd hire somebody for insurance, not for, you know, the things that require.
But you look at character and you look at things like that too, I mean.
I mean, but.
You should.
I, I think that, that the people that we're talking about too, you know, it's, it's a volunteer service and they, they, they look out for the betterment of all of their employees. If you, if we look at some of these employers that we're talking about, we're talking about anywhere from, you know, 30 to hundreds to thousands of employees. And they're hiring across the board and they're evaluating their managers and the people that they, that, that they, that work for them that are out there earning their dollars, right? Because when you start getting higher up, you don't make a dime unless somebody's out there sweating. So, you know, you, you start to learn a value of all of the employees before, below you. And if we put them in a position to say, you have to look after their betterment through the police department. You know, it's not like we're just throwing this at anybody either, you know what I mean? It's going to be recommended of people who are active in the community.
They'll have our criteria, you know, what we, what we expect of a police chief.
I'm just, I'm just indifferent, that's okay.
No, no, and that's why we can respect each other and.
I just feel like, you know, it's not broken, don't, don't fix it, but, I mean.
It's broken, Papa, it's real broken.
Well, if it's broken, then we need to just pay these guys the money and let them bring us the guys to, to do it.
But that's what they're doing.
We haven't done this, this, this thing for, since Police Chief Weems. We've done it differently, you know, since then.
But the idea is this, let me get, let me see if I get this right. Sorry, and of course, I don't have any more here. So the idea would be, would be SGR would still do their, S, yeah.
Is it SSGR?
Yes.
SS.
No, it's SGR, right?
SGR.
One S.
One S.
Yeah, because I pulled it up on, on the thing.
Okay.
The, the, they would go out and still bring us back a minimalized list of candidates for us to evaluate. The only difference now is, we're adding a layer of citizens to go through, evaluate it again and give us their evaluation. That does not mean that we're taking theirs as gospel.
Right.
We take their recommendations with SGR's recommendations, put them together and come up with our own, you know.
Well, my call it.
Yeah, and I would not expect, I would not expect the, the, this commission or council, or, or not council, but the committee to add names to that list.
No, they couldn't, because that's what we would have paid this company.
That's what we're paying them for.
And, and you're absolutely correct, and, and I understand your concerns with that, walking into it. Because we had a situation kind of like that with the school board and hiring an athletic director not too long ago, or, you know, let's, we got a finalist list, let's add people to it. That's not what the process was for. What it was, and, and, and just exactly like the city manager explained, is that part of the community interaction, and I believe it was their suggestion, part of the community interaction was to pick, uh, relevant business leaders, community owners to come in. And they gave a list of like five, and then that committee ranked them. And, and that's the way they were presented to us, is in that, in that ranking. And I think ultimately, we only wound up with three.
Right.
Yeah, and I would think maybe the school.
They're, they're automatically going to get stakeholder engagement. Now, if we want something like, where, we want to have a function where we can bring them all in and you have, you know, so many people like we did with, uh, that one time when we got Chief Weems in. And, and then everybody gives their input and, and that's, that would be above and beyond, but they're automatically, they've got to talk to stakeholders in the community.
Right.
They're going to make a phone call to the superintendent, they're going to talk to people in schools, principals, business owners, they're going to do that. And that's included in there, so they will, I mean, they're going to have stakeholder engagement, they have to do it if they want to know more about our community as well.
And I would expect somebody like the superintendent to be on that list, the director of the hospital to be on that list, you know.
Then tell them.
Huh?
Then tell them.
Yeah.
That's the easiest way to do it, if you don't trust them, tell them, and they'll do it. And I don't recall exactly how those people were identified, but I know the city manager was involved in it, and I know he asked us. Said, hey, we're going to, this is the process, who do you think should be on this group? And I, it was a discussion between, and, and the city manager and them were the ones that selected the individuals that went on that thing. But if you specifically tell them, look, this is going to be part of your community involvement, they'll do it. You know, they were very professional with us, they did a very good job.
Those two definitely would step up for sure and then we can go from there.
I think that's great.
It's just basically the evaluation that doesn't take place by Michael Rowland and, and whomever else was on that.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, they do this for a living, so this is not new for them, I believe.
Good suggestion, sir.
They may have, they may have six active police chief searches going, and I believe there's like eight city managers and then, of course, all the rest, in some bigger cities, they utilize firms like this for director positions and things of that sort.
Now, right now, they have 12, 17 active police executive searches going on.
How many?
17.
That'd be throughout the country probably.
Yeah, that's, that's, this is a, this is a coun, uh, nation, nationwide.
That's not a lot.
No, but that's just, I mean, this is their list of everything they have. 120, 140, 90 something, 60 something, so it ranges from legal professionals to library to tax and revenue to purchasing other.
As far as, what made you pick S, or SGR as a recommendation?
They're, they're kind of the ones that, and I believe they are based, actually here in Texas, they're nationwide though with separate offices, but they're the ones that are the big player in, and have the biggest umbrella, I believe, in, in the search firms. They do interim work also. There are some people out there that, that do some searches like this, but they're not nearly as, as large and don't have the umbrella that these people have.
Okay.
1864, ma'am, that's their active job searches right now.
But it's like huge, okay. All right, um, council, any other recommendations or anything else on this topic? No? Okay. So discussed, Mr. Asparza, you're good with that?
Uh, yeah, I'd like an action if you guys see, forward, move forward to negotiate and sign an agreement as the rest of the agenda item.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor, I make a motion to allow the city manager to, hold on one second. I apologize, it's got to. To pursue and sign an agreement with a firm for the position of police chief. And additionally, to bring back and present recommendations for a board to act as a committee to evaluate the presented resumes.
Hold on, I thought, I thought SGR was going to do that.
It is SGR, the board is after SGR.
No, he was saying that SGR does all this.
Well, what I'm saying is, SGR will get stakeholder.
But he needs to tell them what he's requiring, is Mr.
Automatically, if you guys want to be more specific as to who and those kind of things, then, yeah, so I can bring that back for you guys, say, you know, they're going to, they're going to do something on the stakeholder part.
Now, SGR is the firm, I'm sorry, should I state it, SGR? I, I retract my, my motion for the time being until we can clear this up. So did you want me to state SGR?
You can.
Is that what, Mr. Molina, is that what you're asking of?
No, I was, it was my understanding that SGR is doing all the.
And then they're going to present.
What I would request is, what I would request would be neutral about the company. Because I don't know what practice the city manager is finding to vet the pricing or to find the pricing yet at this time. $29,000 is below the required council action. He can agree to do that, so I would just say if he finds somebody that might be, that he's just as comfortable with, that is just as, exactly.
But what he's adding is just what we discussed, is to make sure that that's upfront, because you said that it needed to be upfront.
And I just said SGR, just to be as general as possible in regards to SGR, just say a search firm.
Well, the thing is, is that it also takes away our negotiating power if we've already said that's the only one that he can talk to.
That's true.
Right.
Yeah.
So we need to give him an option to look outside that firm.
That's why he's saying, don't do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you, that's why I asked, should I say?
Just say SGR, just say.
So I, as I said before, a firm, and then S, so SGR is going to get together these candidates nationwide, be it local or wherever. And it's, and they're going to bring them back and present them to the community leader board. I don't know what we want to call it, engagement board, or what, what did you call it?
Blue ribbon panel.
Blue ribbon panel, whatever you want to call it. The blue ribbon panel, the blue ribbon panel, they'll have an evaluation form before, before they hand it over. Blue ribbon evaluation will hand it over to us after they've done their evaluation and it takes out Michael. That blue ribbon panel removes the idea that Michael Rowland and whomever have to do an evaluation to present it to us.
I don't think, we wouldn't, I mean, they would, they would be doing that anyway, I mean, we're, we're probably still. It'd possibly be removed, I mean, until the very end, I mean, you know, when you're down to the finalists, but yeah. But yeah, we, we can certainly bring back.
Who makes the final decision?
We do.
You all do.
Council.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to bring somebody forward.
What's that?
I would have to bring somebody forward.
He presents to council the final.
And you guys would either say yes or no.
Would you just bring one or several?
I think we, I think we ended up talking about the, the, the full line of recommendations.
It's always one.
I'm just wondering.
Always one, that would've been a few times.
Ask for a charter, it has to come from him. We really don't have any.
Correct, that his position is considered a director and we do not have input except for approval.
We should not have any input or approval, ask for a charter, so.
Interesting, okay.
We only oversee our city attorney and our city manager.
City attorney, city manager.
Municipal judge, and that's it. We have no input on that.
Okay.
All right.
Well, that's. Well, technically, technically, we have the vote of approval or denial.
Right.
And that is our input.
Got it. That's not in the charter.
Yes, if he, if he recommends it and we vote against it.
Get to approve the salary.
Salary.
And that, that's generally the way that you all have final say, is if he brings somebody and you don't want to approve that salary payment or what they're going to get paid, that's generally the way that you deny that hiring.
Okay, so.
May I make a suggestion on a motion?
Yes, please, sir.
Please state it as, and I'll just.
Saying as it is.
As stated.
That you move to authorize the city manager to hire a search firm and to make all, to make all necessary arrangements, including setting up a blue ribbon panel for final review before presentation to council. In addition, allowing the city manager to negotiate all terms of the agreement and to sign any necessary contracts or agreements.
Motion as stated.
Seconded.
Okay, and wait a second, wait a second, for the hiring of a police chief.
So amended.
You have to.
Not amended.
Motion with amendment to, for the position of police chief.
Do you want me to restate it again?
Okay, can we reset?
Yeah, let's retract my motion again.
Retract, he's, he's, for the record, Mr. Crisp has retracted his original motion and we will have Mr. Lemon guide us in the stating of a very important motion.
That we moved to authorize the city manager to hire a search firm and to establish a blue ribbon panel for the final review of any candidates before presentation to council for the position of Alice Police Chief and further authorize him to negotiate and sign any necessary agreements and contracts with said search firm. I made it shorter.
Sounds good.
Okay, so can I, can I clarify that he would negotiate the price of this expenditure as well?
Yes, and.
With these words? Could we cap it?
Yeah. You all can cap it if you would like.
To be brought back to council if it exceeds.
It exceeds.
If it goes.
Over 30,000, because it's at 29.5?
Sure. I think, I think we're good there, yeah.
Yes, let's do 30.
So you want to add that to your motion?
Please, sir.
Sure.
I think council wants that, yes.
You could always put.
All right, let's.
Ron can donate 500.
So the last, so this is the last time, guys, right?
This is the last time we're getting your.
Okay, and I'll try to even make it shorter this time.
Don't make it shorter, just make it.
All right, let's, let's move to authorize, let's move to authorize the city manager to engage a search firm at the cost of $30,000 or less. And then as part of that process, he appoint, recognize or establish a blue ribbon council for a final review of the candidates before presentation to the council. And that he be further authorized to negotiate and sign all necessary agreements and contracts.
To the citizens out there watching, I just want to, I want to apologize, but this is such an important position and a certain, important job that we want to get this right, so I make a motion as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
I'm sorry, I'm aye.
You're aye or a po, or?
No, I said aye.
Aye to a po, aye, okay. So unanimous decision. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all right. Agenda item number seven, discuss and hear presentation from Dr. Justin Hogard, President Coastal Bend College, Mr. Molina.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I thought I reached out to Dr. Justin Hogard, President of Coastal Bend College, invited him out here. Last time he was here, he was, came in with the opening comments and only had a short, limited amount of time and noticed he had, he had a lot to say, and so we're bringing him back just out of fairness, just to give him a, give him a, uh, opportunity to kind of let us know what's going on on there at CBC. Welcome, Dr. Hogard.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, sir.
May I begin with a little levity? I have learned something since I've been in Texas. Mr. Vial does not have two L's in his name, I didn't realize that, although it does. And you shouldn't start any conversation with howdy or hey there, because you don't know which Texas fan you're going to offend. So good afternoon, council. So, Mr. Molina, I apologize, but we have more than a 48-page charter for you. I thought, in all fairness, we would bring a course catalog that was approved for this year. We do have it available online, is, Ms., Madam Mayor, is it okay if we present this to the?
Please, sir, please do, thank you.
I, I was listening, some of the comments were very apropos and actually have me very nervous, all of a sudden.
Thanks, sir.
You know, Mayor Vanover's comments about the pandemic, it seemed to be on the rise again. I have diligently watched DHS and the Excel file as they present, and I keep an eye on Jim Wells County, where all our centers are, but Jim Wells County, Claiborne County, Atascosa and Bee County. So best of luck to you all. Mr. Crisp's comment regarding misinformation, very apropos. I, so it gives me a little pause, sir, right off the bat. I, I want to be clear that with all of you, I am here out of nothing but respect. I have attempted to have conversations when I was, when Mr. Molina asked me back, I was completely surprised. I didn't know what to say today, I didn't know what approach to have. But, um, so I had to step back and just, just think about some of the things that have happened. Is there any way I could have a cup of water, please? Just a little bit of water, please. Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Everybody throwing water at me now, more levity, sorry. So I, I do thank you for this opportunity and may I, is it okay if I remove my mask for this?
You have a show.
Thank you. I did bring with me Hector Vial, who is our Alice Site Director. In addition, I, I believe I have kept my board apprised of all of the issues, all of the conversations that have transpired as this began to unfold. And today I was able to reach out, our chairman, Mr. Carolosi, seated gentleman here, he is our board chair, my big boss. And I'm thankful that he is here to hear the conversation and be able to have the discussion with the full board next week.
No, I'm good, thank you.
And in addition, I have also brought the Dean of Career Technical Education, Dean Blydery, Dean Jared Blydery. In addition, Dean Mark Secord. I figure this may be the last opportunity that we have to talk about this, maybe in this setting. Hopefully, we'll talk about it some other time. But I wanted to bring my two academic experts, because I don't think, Mr. Crisp, as I thought about your comments about misinformation, I don't think misinformation. about your comments about misinformation, I don't think misinformation has occurred, but I certainly believe there's been some communication issues. And I am, I'm here today to just present this information. And again, as I did last month, I believe last month, I invited all of you, if you have any conversation that you wish to have regarding this matter or any other matter regarding Coastal Bend College and the matters in, in Jimwells County, Alice specifically, please, 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 reach out. And so, thank you, Mr. Molina, for doing so. So what I'm, I'm going to hope to do today, as I take over the podium and half of your city council room, is, is clarify some information for you. Thank you, Hector. Let me just say it right there. I, I, um, it's certainly clear to me, as I went back and reviewed Mr. Martinez's presentation to this council, that there is misunderstanding. And I'm hopefully going to begin that and try to clarify some of that today. And I would like to begin with some context. I realized last month when I came before you, there was something that was just not sitting right with me and I could not put my finger on it. I watched Mr. Martinez's video today and I still could not figure out why there was this, you know, I hadn't reached out, I hadn't contacted them, them being Mayor Vanover or Mr. Martinez. So Microsoft has a powerful search engine. I checked my sent box and in fact, I have three emails that I have sent to Mayor Vanover and the, the third one to Mayor Vanover was also addressed to each of you, Chris Willen from Senator Zaffarini's office and Matt Lehman. And that, the date of that was, I think, the nineteenth of June. I brought the emails. If you all would like to see them, totally up to you. It was June nineteenth. I sent it at eleven o'clock in the morning. I obviously included Senator Zaffarini and Representative Lozano in this, these email exchanges to keep them apprised of the situation. So, Madam Mayor, I do apologize to start off on that note. But I, I knew I couldn't remember exactly what I said, if we had or had not had a conversation when I watched Mr. Martinez, when he had his statement that he made on the presentation, he said I had not reached back out. In fact, I emailed Mayor Vanover exactly one week to the day, February fifth. I thanked her for the conversation and told her we were attempting to make contact with Delmar to arrange a meeting. I also stated, and I quote, "I just wanted to let you know we are working to provide the necessary training that make the citizens of Alice competitive in the job market." I did say I would keep her posted and stated also, "Feel free to contact me at any time." I also reached out to Mayor Vanover on March twenty-sixth in response to the shelter in place order that was given, the mayor, obviously, following Governor Abbott's lead. She ordered the, she put a shelter in place for the municipality of Alice. I stated I would write letters. In this email, I stated to her that I would write letters for employees if she needed, but I really needed my employees to be at work because, remember, March twenty-sixth, when this happened, this was a month after our cyber issue. We could not work completely remotely yet. I asked her, and I quote, my, my, oh, this is actually in the last paragraph, "My employees are concerned they will suffer repercussions for reporting to their workplace of employment. I appreciate and respect your decision wholeheartedly. Please consider my request to allow my employees to report to work and to continue to provide higher education opportunities in Alice." Now, those, those two emails were sent prior to the decision. And last month, Mayor, again, I apologize, I did not do my due diligence with the exact correspondence that we had. I realize now, looking back on the dates, I made some understandable and absolutely critical assumptions. I clearly did, and I identify in the second email that we were still working on relationship and training aspects we had previously discussed. This is why I brought a copy of the email to verify this. Because I did not hear back, I mistakenly assumed we were on good footing, as was stated, as I stated last week, I think, or last month, rather, like, you know, I had somebody on, on this, I didn't realize they were not communicating. Moreover, given the governor of the state and Mayor Vanover's orders for the shelter in place and, and stay at home, you know, unless you have to get out, these were done to protect their citizens, I went a step further to assume if we were needing more conversation, those conversations would occur in the future when some of the restrictions were reduced, eliminated perhaps. And we collectively had a clearer and precise understanding of the objectives we needed to achieve. I have never led a college during a pandemic, just as I'm sure you all have never tried to govern a city during a pandemic. Frankly, I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure what exactly to do, nor did I really understand the severity of the issue. Again, I would like to point out and underscore to the council, I did not receive any information that there was a suggestion or a hint that there was going to be a potential legislation, and that's the way it was presented to me, of the arrangement and the resolution that you all passed. I had the conversation with Senator Zaffarini on Friday, June twelfth. This was four days before the city council passed the resolution inviting Delmar College to be the community college of choice for the city of Alice and Jimwells County. Now, a month later, in July, I did have a phone call conversation with Mayor Vanover. Dean Blydery and I were on our way to Pleasanton to meet with representatives from Train, you know, the air conditioning company. And I had, I had placed a call earlier, but, you know, everything was going on. Everything was everything, the pandemic. I called her again, maybe a week or two later, and she returned my call the next day. And she told me how crazy it's been. We were in the throes, it was July, she was trying to figure out what the heck you guys were going to do with your kids for, for school. And I, I hope you remember this conversation, Mayor, because I did tell you Dean Blydery was on the phone and if I needed to, you know, take this privately, just let me know. And she said, nope, I'm good. This is straightforward conversation. We had a good, and we did have a good straightforward conversation. Again, during the phone call, we discussed several items, including the possibilities of esports and some new cutting-edge technology that the college had acquired that was going to allow us to expand our CE, our Continuing Education and Customized Education Programs, and our Continuing Education Programs institution-wide. That does mean including Alice. We had a really good conversation about video games. Ironic, right, but we did. The programming that I am speaking to here, I sent and I, yes, I see that you have it. That is from these, this, it's really a cutting-edge group. With this, these VR goggles, we have had incredible response from high schools. we received three calls from New Oasis County High Schools. We also received a call from Delmar College, asking us what the heck we were doing, what kind of technology did we have. They called our CE Director, Braden Becknell. Sorry, Dr. Escamea, if you're watching, I didn't have a chance to tell you that this morning because I didn't know. We actually had a conversation this morning as well. In that conversation, we also discussed the possibility of a joint meeting between the city council members and members from the CBC Board of Trustees. Until last month, when we met, that was the last time the mayor and I had any conversation or any email exchanges. Another item I want to clarify, and, and hopefully, I was hoping Mr. Martinez would be here today and the county judge, because I watched this, again, I watched the video today and Mr. Martinez made some comments with respect to transferability about CBC classes. he said a credibility, but he meant credibility. He, if you'll recall, Mr. Martinez laid out a timeline for you all. There was a company coming from Ohio and he wanted to show them what was going on in Delmar. Now, I missed this part the first time I watched it because that startled me because we've been here for thirty years. And I'm not sure Mr. Martinez has ever reached out to us. Well, of course, Mr. Martinez has not been an economic developer for thirty years. That's not fair to him, but.
His defense.
Yeah, in his defense, that is true.
He's not here to defend his words, so I'd appreciate if you don't, if you don't do that for him.
Yes, ma'am, I, I will not. But part of what I have to, to respond to are the statements that he made on the recorded statement.
And I can clarify what Mr. Martinez was talking about. We reached out to you in November and December, and I believe you had just gotten hired in December. And we waited for a response call from you in December and we had scheduled a meeting with you on January fifteenth and it was canceled. And then there was no communication until these dates that you're listing right now. So that, in his defense, that's what he's talking about.
Okay.
Just to clarify, just to make sure we're clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
But he did say something about the transferability of our classes.
You're not going to quote me on anything that was.
No, ma'am.
Because that's not what I thought we were here for. I thought we were here on a presentation to represent your school and to show how fabulous your school is.
Uh.
That's what I thought we were doing today, sir.
Okay. Well, to that point then, let me then talk about the ACGM and the WICAM manual. They are the same manuals that Delmar and every community college in the state of Texas uses to create their courses. The ACGM even has the stated learning objectives. I brought the two deans with me here today to actually discuss those manuals, how they work, and, and if you would, were to have any questions. so there were some programs that were mentioned. Oh, I, I guess we should point out too, that in addition to the same manuals that we use, we are also accredited by the same body, Delmar and, and Saks EOC. Mr. Martinez also mentioned the dental hygiene program. We have this program. It is a longstanding reputable history at CBC. We have radiology, we have gas and technology, we have an automotive program. The gas and oil technology program has a ninety-five percent job placement and the automotive program boasts a hundred percent job placement. But these were not really the programs that were discussed. The, the big program was the oil refinery, as I recall. what I'd like to share with you then is what I've shared with Senator Anahosa, Senator Zaffarini, and Representative Lozano. We prepared a document, I have it for you, but I understand I did not present it to the, the council and for public record. But over the last five years, in Jimwells County, Coastal Bend College has awarded seventeen-hundred college awards to graduates from Jimwells County schools. At the time, when we wrote this economic study for Senators Zaffarini and Representative Lozano, and then later, we, after a phone call with Senator Anahosa, he requested it as well, we had, at that time, over eighty-five full and part-time faculty and staff employed from Jimwells County, a total payroll of over one-point-two million through three-quarters of the year. That was going to folks that live in this area and surrounding area, and obviously, much of it being spent here on housing and whatnot. The CBC College Center also consumes, I guess, depending on year and rates, between sixty and a hundred thousand dollars a year in services. So I'm just kind of confused. I asked, when, I, I, I don't recall of how it got to me, maybe through Mr. Vireal, but I, you know, I was wondering how we got to the point where we have a conversation as Mayor Vanover pointed out. You all, they, they went December fourth, we had graduation on December fifteenth, and then we were out for the break. We did meet the twenty-ninth. No one asked us for this information. We didn't get an opportunity to present this. I had to present it to the senators and the representative. I've also asked with Mr. Vireal, we had a conversation with a local superintendent from Jimwells County, and I know he's not in favor of us leaving because he said if we go, it reduces the opportunities for students. And they, and many of these schools actually take their students to Delmar. They bus them. Dr. Escamea told me today that they have students that come from Hebronville on a bus. I can't speak for all of the superintendents of Jimwells County, but members of Duval and Brook County have also inquired about what's going to happen when we leave Jimwells County. And as I stated earlier, this new technology that we brought, we can expand many of our programs. Obviously, we can expand something like nursing, but we have an LBN program here that last year was ranked twelfth in the, uh, I'm sorry, twelfth in the state of Texas and is supported by Krista Spahn. I wish I understood the matrix. I do not understand the matrix by which they told us this information, but we did broadcast it on our website last year. It is not uncommon, as I stated to you earlier, that high schools go looking to, I guess you could say they jump ship every now and again. They get aggravated at a teacher, they don't like a particular path, they don't like a particular dean, what have you. They come and they go. Just like I indicated earlier, we did not anticipate three calls from New Oasis County I will tell you that with respect to Coastal Bend Colleges and the lack of information that was shared, I accept full responsibility. I thought I had people in place doing what they were supposed to do. They didn't. This was during a pandemic as well. So, you know, all I can do is say that that is my fault. But I do have, I, I think it's fair that you all have this information. I also have the economic study that I presented to them, but again, I realize that I may not. But again, I realize that I may not be able to give that to you, because I did not submit it in the public meeting. I have, my deans are here. We're here to answer any questions you have about programming that we have, how these things come to be, and where we are in terms of the things that we're turning around at Coastal Bend College, including a positive relationship with the coordinating board, a positive relationship with SACs-OC. And contrary to popular belief, maybe Dr. Escamia and I do get along. We would like to see this issue resolved. But maybe this thing is taking on a force of its own. I'm not sure. But we certainly here would like to answer any questions you might have of us.
Ms. Bowen, any questions?
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
You, you mentioned oil and gas industry.
Yes, ma'am.
What does Coastal Bend College offer in terms of oil and gas?
I will let Dean Blydery answer that question for you. He is the dean that is over that academic program.
Our oil and gas program, hello, how are you? Our oil and gas program handles upstream, midstream, and downstream, which is the three key functions of oil and gas. Our business partners are Marathon, Conmobil, Shell, Chevron, ConocoPhillips. These are direct interests that we have in our program, and our students get hired by these corporations every year.
Is it offered in Alice?
No, ma'am.
That was my next question. Sorry.
That was where I was going.
How long has it been in play?
In Beeville?
Mm-hmm. Wherever you teach it.
It's been in play in Beeville, I want to say since, don't quote me on the year here.
It's okay.
I would say about 2014. There was a collection of grants that were acquired through oilfield companies that placed it there.
It would have been perfect timing for us to have that, some of that education as well. I'm sorry, Ms.
We do have.
Go ahead.
Now, in that, I will say 50% of that program can be offered online, with additional programs that can be offered here on site. There are two programs that are restricted to Beeville, but that's predominantly in the drilling simulations, because we have a massive drilling simulator for oil rig platforms. But we do offer all of that in CE, and any students that are only interested in portions, if they only want upstream, if they only want midstream, if they only want downstream, we can set up that training for nights and weekends for that to happen there. Now, online does mean that it can go to all four locations. So irrespective
That started when? That started when, online courses?
Online courses have been around a lot longer than that. Since I was going to Coastal Bend College.
That particular program?
Well, it has to start at the inception of the program.
Okay.
But again, can't quote me on the year, because I don't know.
It's okay. It's just point made, thank you.
But yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bowen, any other questions?
The other one that citizens have asked me about is the dental hygiene. That's offered here in Alice?
No, ma'am. It is not.
That's also not offered.
No, it is not.
So our dental hygiene program, sorry, hello again.
Go ahead.
Our dental hygiene program has an external accreditation through COTA, which is the national standard for dental associates. The only site that we have set up that's approved by COTA is in Beeville. We don't have, basically, the personnel and the funding to operate it at a second location. With that, we also haven't received expressed interest as far as formulating a charity drive foundation to set it up in another location, because we would have to raise those funds through donations, so on and so forth. That program requires a lot of staff, a lot of equipment, and space. Space we can work out, but as far as the initial startup funding, it is one of the more pricey programs to start.
Okay, that'll be it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Molina?
Dr. Hoggard, what is your annual payroll here? Annual payroll here for the CBC? Do you know more than us?
It would be approximately, I feel like Dean Blydery, approximately 10 million. It's about half of our operating budget. And this year, we
Is that here or across?
For the whole institution. Yes, sir.
I think he asked Alice.
Yeah, Alice, you know Alice per se.
It was 1.2 three quarters of the way through the year, so if we extrapolate out, I would guess one and a half. It may be even a little less than that, because adjunct instructors, who are, I'm referring to as part-time instructors, they don't have as many classes in their regular semesters, and not as many students go. Somebody's creeping up on me, sorry, is that my reflection? Just a creep in there, I guess. But I would say, I think that would be a safe guess at this point.
And your online would be included in that, like what you pay people to be on a screen and not a person?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I'm sorry, I did misunderstand the question when you asked it. I thought you meant totally, but when we did this, this report for the senators, we looked at the, I'm sorry, I'm creeping up to you.
No, that's okay.
I don't want to breathe on you.
I'll just knock you down.
What we did is we, we went through three quarters of the year, and we looked at, which our fiscal year starts in September. Yours is the same, I would assume?
October.
October, okay. So we, we created this in the summer, and I want to say we had three or four months left. So that would be a fair estimate, probably 1.35, 1.4. I would also state that that is all from tuition. We do not tax here. We only have one taxing county, and that is B County. And we also, that is not solely just from tuition, that is also from the ETS grant, the Early Talent Search Grant, which is part of the National Trio Grants, which I mentioned last month when I was here, that through the course of 20 years, we've had, this is like a four-year grant, we have used $6 million to help Jimwells County kids go to a college. We've prepared them to go to a college, not necessarily CBC. We may be sending many of those students to Delmar, UT, Texas A&amp;M.
But are students still paying out-of-resident fee as well, because of that?
That is correct, ma'am. All of our students outside of B County pay a out-of-district rate, with the exception of our dual-credit students, who pay $33 per credit hour right now, and additional fees. One of the things that we have been reviewing and studying, excuse me, I have to take a drink. Is what we are trying to do at the college in whole, in total, is be completely transparent. I want to streamline this process, especially when it comes to dual credit, because, for instance, one of your kids, or maybe nephews or nieces, I'm not going to say grandkids, right? But one of your, you know, a relative, next-door neighbor takes a dual-credit class, they pay for the class, they pay fees and books. And what we have been talking to with some of the superintendents, when we say, look, here's what we're thinking, a flat fee, and just on its merit, it looks like we're going to double the fee, but, or the price, but what we're actually looking to do is set a price that covers all the fees. So, which I think all of you can appreciate from a budget standpoint. You know how many city employees you have, you know if you're going to give a COLA raise, you know exactly what your, your bottom line is going to be for your payroll, for your city employees. In the same way, if I'm a superintendent, and I know I have, I'm just going to say 30 students, and so their senior year, as I'm doing my budget, 30, 30 students that are going to take collectively, I'm just going to use 100 hours, total hours. Well, if we make one flat fee, we can say 600 bucks in your tuition, as opposed to now, it's, well, we have tuition, and we have this fee and that fee. So we are trying to, to figure out a way to streamline that, to make it crystal clear for students. And we do have many parents in school districts who do not have schools that pay for their tuition. So from a, from a parent's perspective, it also helps them with budgeting for, say, that junior that's going to be the senior the next year. Yes, ma'am.
I did want you to touch on that, because I was here when Larry brought up about credits transferring, and he made a remark like that, and I actually, you know, just told him, hey, you know.
You asked specifically, sir, do they offer English, history, and math as a precursor to the, to the four-year university?
Okay.
That's, again, I don't mean to quote you, but I actually looked.
I don't, I don't recall.
I did not want to come unprepared this time.
Sure, I appreciate that.
And Delmar, Delmar does offer, I mean, as a community college, we actually, community colleges, and I will not speak solely for Delmar, but I believe they are in the same kind of school that we are. We have three tracks of education. We have a transfer-in-general education, which, as you stated, sir, when you were speaking to Mr. Martinez, and you just stated now, or I guess I helped state for you more correctly. Those classes are the general education core classes that transfer. If you get the core classes, and Dean Secord can help me really say this and articulate it for Texas, but in general, there are core classes. There is a college math that is usually required, six hours of science, if I'm not mistaken. And those classes, you know, fall into certain categories. Now, some of the classes that Dean Secord and I were just talking about, that, that will not transfer from a community college, are developmental education courses, like, it is not uncommon to have a, I'm going to use math as an example, math is a recency issue. If you notice that high school students, they take math every single year. And then, as soon as you get in college, you think, oh, I don't have to take math, and they put you in a math class, because math is a recency. If you don't use it, you will lose it. For instance, how many of you know the quadratic equation off the top of your head? I'm impressed if you do. I know the Pythagorean theorem, but I don't know the other one. But, but Dean Secord's area of expertise was science. And share with him the story about biology and for the majors and whatnot.
Yes, this is a common situation you come across, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You'll often have someone that comes into college, and they'll say, well, I'm going to go into, say, pre-med. So I'm going to take some biology classes. So they'll, they'll sign up for a biology class. Say they take Biology 1308. It's a non-major's course. But then, let's say they transfer to Corpus Christi, and they want to be pre-med. Well, they require a biology for majors. Let's say that 1308 course that you took at Coastal Bend, it would transfer if you were a business major as a non-major in biology. But for pre-med, you need a course of higher rigor, so they would expect 1306. So it's not an equivalent transfer. So it's real important, when you're transferring, that you look at equivalency. And that's where we use the Lower Division Academic Course Guide Manual, so that we're comparing apples to apples. And some of that ties into advising. Sometimes students register themselves, and they're not really aware. Here's a classic one. Let's say I'm taking microbiology, I'm taking 2420. And then I go to university, and I want to become a microbiology major. Let's say I'm pre-med. They require a junior level, so at 3420, so they won't take that course.
Okay.
It's not the rigor they require for their program. So that's really important, you know, to look at pathways and roadmaps to make sure you're on an equivalent path. So sometimes we do run across that, but it's not that our courses don't transfer, it's that you're not transferring equivalent across institutes.
Yes, sir.
I think another fair example, too, is the nursing program. It is not uncommon for a nursing student to start, especially an LBN program in one institution. Life happens, they move, they're not going to get to take their credits with them. They have to start over. And that is not a CBC or a Delmar thing, that's a nursing thing. That is pretty universal, that happens in my last school in Missouri. It was the same thing, they would not take any of the nursing classes. It is also true on the AAS side, which is the Associate of Applied Science, which is kind of the workforce. You do it, you get a degree, and you go straight into the workforce, kind of like automotive or the radiology. I start in radiology, and I go to a school, I, life circumstances, I move, what have you, and I want to take radiology, well, if they don't have the program, what they're going to do is they're going to throw those classes into a lower-level elective, and then you have to take everything else, so your classes may or may not even be applicable to your degree. I believe that this is going to be an issue that the state legislature will be taking up very soon, because it is problematic for us, any student, irrespective of their community college. College takes money and resources, and in many instances, we are dealing with folks who are high-risk. They've had life circumstances have them, and their resources, both time and money are precious, and we don't want them to take classes that are not applicable.
Right. I just had one more quick question, and maybe Michael can kind of shed some light on this. I wish John was in here, but, I mean, like I said, just one of these innocent observations. Any, 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 any chance that both schools can coexist here?
Yes, they can. They can, and I've spoken to Dr. Escamia and yourself, where they, they could.
I'm sorry, I did not hear the question, ma'am.
For CBC and Delmar to work together, which was what we talked about as well on the phone.
Coexist, coexist.
And they can legally.
For, to coexist, let me, may I?
Yes, sir, because there's a lot to it.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
But if you can keep it to a minimum, sir, the integrity of our meeting, we still have a lot to go.
Absolutely. We, to do that, we would simply, in the same manner that we work these arrangements with universities, we do like a two-plus-two, we would have to work a, let's use your example. We talked a lot about the refinery program
Right.
that, that your group, when you went up there, were very impressed with. We actually talked this morning about the possibility of a one-plus-one, where we could lay out some of the foundations, some of the science classes, they would finish it, and then they could go to Delmar. But ladies and gentlemen, those kind of things can already happen, if we're, if we know that they're going to, what class they're going to take, and they're going to go there. But to your point, yes, we could. And we do have an arrangement like that, actually, in Pleasanton, it's not a one-plus-one, but we have a partnership with a CBL program in Pleasanton. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Okay. Mr. Chris?
Talking about this coexistence and coexisting, and, and, you know, why does it seem so intent that the idea of this is making y'all leave? I mean, what is there behind that? Because I know that there's something there with funding, right? The state, the state funds a lot of this. Has that become the issue, or what exactly becomes the issue as to why it is the intent of saying, well, if it goes this route, we're gone?
Yes, sir. That, thank you for bringing that point up. And I think the city manager probably can speak to this as well, because I understand he had a phone call in after I came to talk last week, or last month.
You're bad on dates, sir.
I had to look them up in my phone.
You talk about last month like it was last year, and last year like it was last month.
Mr. Chris, the simple answer is, is that we have legislatively drawn service areas. The city of Alice, Jimwells County, Duval, Brooks, Part of Atticosa, Clayburn, B, McMullen, I know I'm missing a couple, pardon me. They are legislatively, legislatively defined to be in Coastal Bend's service area. Now, can we coexist? We just have to work out partnerships on very specific programs. But the resolution that you all passed with the city of Agave, this is the college of choice, if, if Delmar were to come in and legislation were to pass, we wouldn't have an option, sir. If the, if the service area is redrawn, and Coastal Bend is drawn out, and now Jimwells County is in Delmar's college's service area, we can't be there. We can still do dual credit, we can still do continuing education, customized education. We can still do dual credit, we can still do continuing education, customized education, but we cannot occupy the same space. It's not like the university, sir.
I don't think he's talking about the same space.
Oh.
Because that's obviously not an option.
I did think what you were asking me...
I'm talking about the, you know, the city of Alice, just within the city of Alice.
Yes, sir, and it's...
That's the space you're talking about?
And for the record, they have worked together. Delmar was in, and then I don't know what happened, but they were ousted, and I can't speak for that because that was not during my time.
And you know what?
You can't either, because you were not...
And all I would be doing would be speculating, and I'm not going to do that.
I can just tell you that it did happen and they were here, as we know, at the Armory, and then it was something...
I believe it was a general education program, I think, it was something...
I'm like you, sir, I can't speak for it because I really don't know the exact...
Who was it, John?
But see, that...
Can our attorney speak?
What was it, John?
This is John Lemon, our city attorney.
And first, Mr. Malina, you had a question earlier, and I apologize, I had gotten a phone call about a public meeting issue, I was trying to deal with it, but what was your question earlier? Was it in regards to this?
That's, we've already addressed it.
It is not correct legally to say that they cannot operate in the same community, that is not a correct statement. There are ways that they can operate in the same community.
Now, my question was, can they coexist? Can like one be on one side of town, one on the other, and just, right, offer different plans?
And that was my comment to both of them, as you recall on the phone, that I said, my, the best of both worlds is what I would love for my citizens, that you guys bring something to the table, more so than what you guys have for the last thirty years, and then Delmar to introduce something new and different perhaps, because they cannot offer the same courses. They cannot offer nursing and nursing, they cannot offer oil and gas and oil and gas, but if they piggyback like what you're talking about, that is very legal and can definitely be done, it's just never been brought to the table.
Yes, ma'am, and that is why Dr. Eskamia told me he was going to have a phone call, we were going to see if we could all sit down and have a conversation, that didn't happen, and specifically, sir, to your question, the reason why I went the route I did is because Senator Zaffarin told me specifically, legislation was being considered to draft Coastal Bend College out of this district. That is why my position has been from, right from the beginning, sir, is that we, if you're, if we do that route and legislatively do this, then we do have to go. Now, to do what both of you said, that is actually going to be not a Dr. Hoggard and Dr. Eskamia conversation.
Dr. Hoggard, let me ask a question, though, and you referenced, we were on a phone call, there was a phone call that we were, you say we were on a phone call, or you had mentioned that I was on a phone call?
Somebody told me that you called the next day, asking about the process, and I don't know if it's true, I shouldn't have said that, my apologies, misinformation.
Called you?
No, and that's what I heard from Austin.
And I'd like to clarify again, it is not correct.
No, I haven't called.
It is not a correct statement to say that both community colleges could not operate in the city of Alice at the same time, that is not a correct statement.
Thank you, sir.
All right? If, and as the discussion continues, I think to clarify is that what Coastal Bend is saying is if we bring in Delmar in the same capacity, offering the same programs they are, then they cannot continue to operate. I think that's the statement that they're saying, not that they couldn't possibly operate inside the city at the same time. Is that correct?
That is correct, and the clarifier, sir, is the way it was presented to us was if this takes a legislative path, which we were led to believe was happening, that that discussion was happening, that if the service area was redrawn, we would not be able to be here in the capacity that we are now. How is that?
That's a more correct statement.
In the capacity that you are now.
That's the exact word.
Because, which brings me to this question, right?
First, I haven't called Austin, asking, inquiring about anything, so I don't know where that came from, but yeah.
And that's a shame, you should have heard it, if you were locally invested, you would have heard it before it went there.
Yeah. So my question is this, we were presented forty-three pages of your, I guess, your classes offered, not the numbers, but just a, you know, synopsis, I guess you could say, right? Everything from housekeeping.
Right.
To starting a pet care business, to, you know, the more technical side of things, which is a very, very good range of what is available through CBC. The question is, in the city of Alice, how much of that is actually offered? And I say, how much is actually offered in the city of Alice, not that they can go to Beeville, not that, that in this little building that's down the road here, how much can our citizens of Alice actually take in, in the city of Alice, or if they come in from Duval County, or if they come in from Webb County or whatever county, that's the primary thing for us. We are not saying that you're not offering this, that, and the other, we are not trying to go down that road. What we want to do is we want the most for our citizens, right? And I hope you can understand that, we're not trying to dog anybody. I mean, you have been here, you have been a staple of the community for thirty-plus years, we are grateful for that, but the thing is, is that if we're not increasing that, if we're not offering, you know, twenty percent, thirty percent, fifty percent, that's the catch.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Hoggard, isn't the city of Alice one of the bigger enrollment numbers that you all have from your other campuses?
No.
No.
About to go, I'm listening now.
Twenty percent of, and is that last year or currently due to internet courses?
That was based on, ah, you know what, we did a request for Dr. Eskamia, and that was, Delmar College, not Dr. Eskamia, we got the number, seven hundred and ninety-six semesters, seven hundred and ninety-six students this semester, it represents about twenty-five percent of our population.
Compared to all of them, or?
Twenty-five percent of our total population. With respect to your question, Mr. Chris?
Yes, thank you.
We did not have the capability to offer those list of programmings, as I said, that is new, that we just brought that in this summer, working with a technology company, and Dean Wiedrich can tell you when exactly we acquired them and how that works.
Right.
I want to say you were also inquiring as to the credit programs that could be offered in a full AAS degree, right, a full associate's degree.
No, no, I was just saying that there's a wide range of everything that is offered, which is a very good thing.
Our new CE catalog is going to be completed by the end of this week, and it comes over eight hundred courses, every single one of which can be taught in Alice, Texas, and can be offered to students.
Online?
Online.
Remotely?
No.
So we're going to have a college full of instructors teaching all of those courses?
I don't know, CE...
Just continuing ed, which is online.
But I thought that was a specific question.
No, I want to know, because here's the thing, is even if you're not, the great thing about, and I'm, about the online training is, even if you're not in Alice, we can still get online training, we can get online training from University of Phoenix.
Right.
You know what I mean? So that's a great thing, that is new development, so what I want to know is what is offered physically here, in the building? That is my question.
We have welding, we have our business management, we have business admin assistant, we have our CIT hub here in Alice, we have LBN program and our RN bridge, all offers here in Alice, onsite, based at...
But your RNs have to go to Beeville.
No, they don't, the RNs...
They do everything here?
They run everything through online, remote, and clinical.
I've been told by students that that's not correct, but I could be wrong, because I'm not an RN student, so I take your word.
Along with those, you also offer a bunch of prereq, right? Like your standard English isn't...
Every single one of the transfer-in-general education courses.
But you know what, I want to make sure that, when the citizens and everybody hear this thing, that we're not selling y'all short either, you know what I mean? I'm trying to go across the board.
And to your point, sir, twenty-five percent of an AAS degree, regardless of who offers it in the state of Texas, twenty-five percent has to be general education.
That's required of all of them.
That is required by, yes.
Whoever it is.
It is required.
So it's not special to CBC or Delmar?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am, it is typically nationwide.
It just you have to do it. Okay, Mr. Burke, I'm sorry, Mr. Chris.
No, that's good, that hit me right now.
You're good? Okay. Thank you all so much, I appreciate you all coming.
I do appreciate you coming.
And appreciate thirty years of service to Alice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoggard.
I appreciate the conversation, and we'll see, I guess, where this takes us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Safe trip.
Drive safe.
Thank you.
You want a little five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, I can't...
At this time, at six-thirty, we're going to take a five-minute break so that we can continue the rest of this meeting, is paused for five minutes, the time is now six-thirty.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome back, everybody. Sorry for the delay. The time is now six forty and we're back in session. Agenda item eight, discussion regarding Collins Cemetery Maintenance Services and discuss, consider, and act upon authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into an interlocal agreement with Jimwells County to provide services such as water and garbage collection. So council, I bring this forward to you today as I'm sure all of you have gotten requests for services and things like that at the cemetery. We can't ignore the fact that it's become an eyesore because it has been pretty much abandoned, you know, after all these years of, it was owned, not owned. There's so much history to it and I've researched it and looked and really nobody is responsible for it. But ultimately, it is our cemetery and it is our past citizens and residents that lived here. So I asked Mr. Esparsa to kind of look into it, see if we can and how we can legally and to bring it before you guys to decide if this is something that we could do in the name of just doing the right thing for aesthetic reasons, doing right by our people that lived here in the past, whatever it is. But with Michael, Michael, do you want to?
Sure. Yeah, so in our city attorney's kind of well versed in this. We've looked at it before when we were sitting up there together also.
That's true.
And one of the things about, there's two options, you know, for a cemetery like that. So one, it is a historical cemetery. It's over fifty years old. So there's some things that can happen when it is abandoned in the nature that it is. And what happens though is when a municipality takes it over, which we certainly can, we're held to higher standards. Repairing fences, removing any walls, resetting any memorial stones, notices need to be given. There's a long list of things under Health and Safety Code, I believe, John is with it.
Seventy, sixty-five.
Then the other option would be if a county were to take it over, they're not, they don't seem to be held to such a high standard. It just, the Health and Safety Code, Section seven one three, zero two eight, says, "For the purposes of historical preservation or public health, safety, or welfare, a commissioners court may use public funds, county employees, county inmate labor as provided by Article forty-three point ten, code of criminal procedure, and county equipment to maintain a cemetery that is at least fifty years old." And so what I was, and I talked to the county judge about it. We were going to have some more conversations, but what I would like to do is work with them on them maintaining it, taking it over, maintaining any of the lines inside and the yard and the lawn care of it. And we would provide them the water and the garbage pickup. And so we pretty much kind of go, you know, half and half. I believe, you know, our garbage pickup over there is probably around fourteen hundred dollars a month. We have, I think, five of those bins there, commercial bins, and then we do provide water. And we can provide water if they maintain it. The county maintains the infrastructure inside and through an interlocal, we can provide water. So wanted to, you know, I know the mayor was, has talked about this and I'm sure y'all get some complaints about the cemetery and maybe, you know, it's the time to try to figure out how to fix this and work it. And if we can work out an interlocal with the county, we can move forward. And that's what I'd like to do is be able to work an interlocal with them on that. I don't think that it would, you know, if we take it on ourselves, it's going to be a financial burden. And, you know, and there's, you know, a lot of work to be done and a lot of regulation on our part. And with them, it's just a lot less. You know, it's real vague. They're held to a lower standard than we would be.
Mr. Burke, any questions?
No, good.
Mr. Chris?
Now, you talk about the financial burden and I agree with the fact that we don't need to be taking that on right now. Now, there is a regulation that says that if the municipality takes over it, you could levy a five cent tax for every evaluation. We are not in a position.
No.
Community-wise, to even do something like that. But something like that would have to be in consideration. So the fact that we're helping, that we're trying to move towards the county to work on this alleviates a burden upon the taxpayers of the City of Alice because we just can't afford to do it.
Mr. Lein?
And if I can comment to you, that, Mr. Crisp, that the county can go in and basically do it.
Yes.
Because it meets the criteria without taking any action and they have no legal requirements. If we do it, there is a complete list of things that Mr. Esparsa just gave you. He's got a notebook that has all of the things spelled out that's several paragraphs long.
Yeah.
And first and foremost, you understand, we would start taking over who gets buried where. We would start selling, monitoring, taking care of those, the plots themselves, not just regular maintenance. And we become the business entity in charge of dealing with that, which is something that would be extremely difficult for the city and the city to do appropriately. You'd have to create staffing for it. There'd have to be people out there. You'd have to keep the records. So you're looking at a major endeavor that probably we would wind up making everybody out there angry or everybody out there with family members angry and just potentially mess it up. And the county, however, can come in and just do whatever. And if they are doing it and using it, your government functions to do it, we can enter into an interlocal with them to assist them in their government function where we couldn't and where we probably shouldn't give away things for free, like free dumpsters right now and whatnot that we do that is arguably questionable under the Texas Constitution. Very clearly, we can do it through an interlocal agreement and it shores everything up and sets our obligations to assist the county in what's happening.
And that's where I was going with it. The fact that we can do this does not mean that we should do this right now. The process of moving towards the county with their lessened regulations and the fact that, like the things that they stated, you know, being much, much more stringent degree of maintenance and management, we're not in the business of, you know.
And actually, the municipality can charge a tax.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. No, the municipality can charge up to five cents per.
For hundreds.
But we're not at a place where we need to be going into business and taxing people in order to take over a business.
No, and this is.
So I think the county is the way to go.
Interlocal agreement.
Yes.
To be able to assist.
A hundred percent agree.
And that's why we wrote it. I was very particular about how we wrote it because I understand those concerns too. And I understand that a lot of people, that's not a concern to some, but to a whole lot of people, it really is. And I just always think about selling Alice. And that doesn't help when you have a cemetery that looks like that. But if we could enter into something, and that's why I had it written this way, so that hopefully we could, and by assisting and doing our part, which we kind of already do this, guys. You know, we do it because we do it for our citizens. So it would be neat if we could do interlocal agreement with them.
That's, yeah, agreed.
Mr. Molina?
So what is the county's contribution going to be again?
Their contribution would be maintaining any water lines inside the break and.
Inside the what?
Inside any water lines.
Okay.
That break and maintaining the grounds.
Okay. And what's going to be ours?
Ours is providing the water for the cemetery and also the garbage pickup.
Okay.
Okay. And what about like the cells of the plots or who's handling that or?
That stays, if the county takes the lead on it, that stays as is, however they've been doing it.
How have they been doing it? Nobody knows?
They have been.
It's abandoned.
Well, that one, I believe, is, and I talked to the neighboring new Roberson, and they have the new place. It's two over from Collins. And he says that it's filled. Now, I mean, I guess they do have, every once in a while, they'll have somebody.
But they don't. That old one's filled.
Yeah.
And that's the one in question right now.
Yeah.
So it's filled. There's no more anything. And that's what always made me upset about it, that they kind of sold it and left. And that was it.
Wow.
And nobody.
You had a now defunct funeral home here in town that was still selling lots out there. Whether there was somebody in the lot or the plot already, they were still selling those lots. It was subject to an investigation a few years ago.
Crazy.
Sad, sad deal. Ms. Bowen, any questions?
Mr. Molina did ask the questions I had in mind about the water and the garbage. And we're not going to add anything else to that with this interlocal agreement, correct?
No, and so the mayor was pretty specific about the water and garbage and that's why, you know, it's limited on an interlocal. And I think that'd be the appropriate way to do it, limited to those two. You know, and that's, it's still money, you know, and it'll probably balance out. That amount of money is probably going to be the same of what it's going to take to maintain the grounds. So, you know, in a way, we're splitting the costs in half.
Good, okay.
So once again, we're kind of footing the bill for something that was unexpected and just kind of lands in our lap.
Like always, but this was.
This has been.
To help us with it.
This has been something that has been.
We're just.
A problem for a long time.
I think this is more along the lines of a shift of an existing problem that we've already been footing the bill for.
Right.
To make it legitimate and legal and actually improve the quality for the community.
And I think our citizens would appreciate that, that we invest in that.
And we're not investing any more money than we already are. I mean.
Right, exactly.
We'd have to go up out there, literally turn everything off and pick up the dumpsters, which I don't necessarily foresee us doing. So we need to work on this interlocal and move forward.
Okay. All entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, excuse me, authorizing a city manager to negotiate and enter into an interlocal agreement with Jimwells County to provide services such as water and garbage collection for new, for, excuse me, Collins Cemetery.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crisp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Motion stands as stated. Thank you, council. Agenda item number nine, discuss, consider, and act upon authorizing the city manager and finance sign engagement letter for the year end September thirtieth, 2020, audit with Park Fowler and Company.
Mayor, this is a continuation on our company that does our audit. And so they're the same ones that did it last year. So we're asking just for a continuation to utilize them again for this year, this fiscal year.
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Mr. Molina?
No questions.
Mr. Crisp?
Just to be clear, in the past, since we started using Parker Fowler, Park Fowler, we have actually been on time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Where they helped us, were they the firm that actually helped us get through when we were falling behind a few years back and what have you?
Yes.
Yes. So this has been a tried and true firm that we've seen good results from. So we're not actually, you know, falling behind. And it'll actually assist us in staying up to date by not transitioning to somebody else. So I'm all for this.
Okay. Mr. Burke?
No question.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time?
May I make a motion to, for the city manager and finance to sign an engagement letter for the year of September thirtieth, 2020, audit with Park Fowler and Company?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Crisp. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay, motion stands as stated. Agenda item ten, discuss, consider, and act upon approving Alice Business Ambassador's bylaws and rules.
Mayor, so what we have is, we brought the bylaws that kind of matched what the ambassadors had before. We still wanted to, you guys, if you want to mark it up some, you know, we needed to add the second part of that on the business side. And I know what we were talking about is maybe looking at something that the SBA was doing also to kind of help it match some of this. So I'd ask to table this, but also if you guys have some recommendations, if you could give that to us before the next meeting on this, and then we can include that because we'll have a different, a different rules and bylaws at the next meeting.
Would council consider tabling?
Yeah, very much so.
Me too.
Yeah, very much so. This is a very ambassador-based and no business in there. So, yeah. I mean, like you said, you brought this in for, you know, as a starting document. So I appreciate that and we'll go forward.
And I think we know what we're going to pull from the business side and the SBA side on that. We just wanted to see what you guys want to pull from the ambassador's side.
Okay.
And if you have some recommendations on the other, also note them on there and then we'll put it together. But ask for it to be tabled.
Motion to table.
I motion to table.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Molina. Table is motioned. Agenda item ten, motion, I mean, agenda item ten, tabled.
She's got to take a vote.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion stands as stated. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Agenda item eleven, discuss, consider, and act upon, number one, establishment, dissolution, division, and/or reorganization of Alice boards, commissions, and committees. And two, appointments, reappointments, removal, and/or term clarifications of appointments, vacancies, and/or memberships of the City of Alice boards, commissions, and committees.
And, Mayor, council, the reason we put those on there is we have an application for our boards. And when we do, we wanted to bring it for y'all's consideration. The planning and zoning doesn't have an opening. And this gentleman did mention the library board and public recreation board. Well, I did get another one today, another application. And I think we're supposed to get some more in from some boards, but I wasn't expecting any action here. I just wanted to have it on there so y'all could receive this application at this time.
Okay, council?
So if recommendation would be to table as well.
Okay. Counsel, recommendation to table?
Motion to table.
Okay.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Crisp. All in favor?
Aye.
That's okay.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Same sign. Okay, motion stands as stated.
We know we have a few coming in, so we'll be good to get them all together.
Agenda item twelve, discuss, consider, and act upon a resolution adopting TCAP's professional service agreement and JEXA Energy's commercial electric service agreement for power to be provided on and after January first, 2023, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for electricity equal to or more favorable to the municipality of the City of Alice.
Mayor and council, they're asking us to renew this. They're a little, they're quite a bit ahead. But this is the Texas Coalition for Affordable Power and this is a nonprofit that is kind of authorized in the state of Texas. And they negotiate the rates for a lot of municipalities and counties and other government entities on the electricity. And they, I mean, they save us money. When they save us money, they're saving the taxpayers' money. And they're asking for us to renew already through resolution so you can continue in negotiating and have that buy-in power.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Burke? Okay, Mr. Crisp, it's okay.
No, I'm happy they're ahead. We normally see this in November, December, right?
Shotgun.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Molina?
No questions.
Ms. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time?
I'd like to make a motion, authorizing a resolution adopting TCAP's professional services agreement and JEXA, JEXA, JEXA Energy's commercial electric service agreement for power to be provided on and after January first, 2023, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for electricity equal to or more favorable to the municipality of the City of Alice.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Crisp. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item thirteen, hold a public hearing to consider and act upon an ordinance to rezone GCR addition lots one, two, three, four, five, and six from B one Business District to R one Residential District and rezone lot from B one Business District to R six Mobile Home Subdivision known as North King Street and Easterling Drive. GCR addition, previously known as three point three seven seven acre tract, measured three point three eight two acres, as recorded in document number four five eight one zero five, official records, Jimwells County, Texas, also being out of Farm Block sixty-five of Alice Farm Block subdivision, as recorded in volume one, page sixty-two, transcribed map records, Jimwells County, Texas. The time is now six fifty-eight. We'll start our public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda item thirteen, please come forward. Okay, it looks like we do not have anybody coming forward at this time. So the time is now six fifty-nine. The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Esparsa?
Yes. So this went through planning and zoning and it passed unanimously. This is a property right there on the end of King and Easterling. And this is converting B one to R one residential. All that property is residential and across the street, I think it's mixed use. Once you cross King Street, there's Palm Mobile Home Park. And so a portion of it is going to be R one residential. And then another portion is going to be R six mobile home. And I look at the map, it looks like lots one through six are residential and lot seven is going to be a mobile home on the back end. And so it went through planning and zoning. There were no objections and it passed.
Mr. Crisp, any questions?
No, no.
Mr. Molina, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
No question.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to rezone GCR addition lot one, two, three, four, five, and six from a B one Business District to an R one Residential District and rezone lot seven from a B one Business District to an R six Mobile Home Subdivision known as King Street and Easterling Drive. GCR addition, previously known as. Easterling Drive, GCR addition, previously known as 3.377 acre tract, as recorded in document 458105, official records, Jimwells County, Texas, also being out of Farm Block 65 of Alice Farm Block Subdivision as record, as recorded in volume 1, page 62, transcribed map records, Jimwells County, Texas.
Sex.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item 14, hold a public hearing to consider and act upon final plat establishing GCR addition lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 and 7 of 3.377 acre tract, measured 3.382 acres as recorded in document number 458105, official records, Jimwells County, Texas, also being out of Farm Block 65 of Alice Farm Block Subdivision as recorded in volume 1, page 62, transcribed map records, Jimwells County, Texas, situated within the city limits of Alice, Texas, Jimwells County. The time is now 7:01. We will hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda item 14, please come forward. It looks like we do not have anybody wishing to speak on this agenda item. The time is 7:02. This public hearing is now closed. Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time, counsel.
Mayor, I'd like to move, um, to, uh, for approval of the final plat establishing GCR addition, uh, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 and 7 of 3.377 acre tract, measured 3.382 acres as recorded in document number 458105, official records, Jimwells County, Texas, also being out of Farm Block 65 of Alice Farm Block Subdivision as recorded in volume 1, page 62, transcribed map records, Jimwells County, Texas, situated within the city limits of Alice, Texas, Jimwells County, Texas.
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Molina. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion stands as stated. Okay. Agenda item 15, I believe Ms. Bowen will step out due to conflict of interest with 15, 16, 17, 18 and 19?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? Thank you.
See you next month.
Enjoy the meeting. Don't forget to wake me up. Ms. Molina? All right. Agenda item 15, discuss, consider and act upon executing an interlocal agreement with Jimwells County related to the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Mitigation CDBG MIT application administered by the Texas General Land Office. Mr. Sparseth?
I believe we had Grantworks on Zoom. Uh, Roger?
Here.
Checking.
Okay.
Nobody there?
She didn't, she didn't send me an email.
Yes.
Is he the one that sent Dana local that was already signed by the, oh, she's there. She can't, she just didn't have audio.
No audio, audio, Roger.
Her, she's muted. She needs to unmute herself. She's in the bottom left-hand corner.
Ms. Roxanne, it looks like you may have to unmute yourself.
Oh, no, that's Barbara that's muted, sorry.
Can y'all hear me now?
There we go.
There you are. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I don't think I had audio permissions. Um, good evening, mayor and council members. Um, this interlocal is, um, for the CDBG MIT grant for, uh, Jimwells. They will be applying for this grant, um, for drainage project throughout Rancho Alegre and, um, Alice Acres, um, wi- including K-Bar. So, um, the work is all drainage and that's all county work, but we wanted to, to see if we could, um, execute an interlocal just in case or in the event that, um, we would be having to, uh, replace or, or move any city utilities that are existing out there. Um, I'm figuring that that is a big possibility, um, considering some of the, um, the drainage work that's going to go on in that area. So we wanted to, um, execute an interlocal just in the event that we do need to, um, need to, uh, work with y'all in, uh, replacing or if we needed to replace any of your lines or if we needed to move any of the lines, um, while we're doing the drainage work.
Okay.
And this wouldn't have a fis- a fiscal impact to the City of Alice.
No fiscal impact. Okay. Mr. Molina, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Chris?
That was my question. We're good.
Mine too. Mr. Burke?
Fine.
Good. Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, motion to authorize a city manager to, uh, execute an interlocal agreement with the city, with Jimwells County related to the 2020 Community Grant, Community Development Block Grant, minus one, uh, mitigation CB, CDBG MIT application administered by the Texas General Land Office.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item 16, discuss, consider and act upon a resolution authorizing the submission of a, of a Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program application to the Texas General Land Office for Virginia Street Area Drainage Improvements for an estimated total project cost of $7,012,315.75. B, the mayor and the city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorize representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program. And C, authorizing, authorizing committing the required $70,123.15 in matching funds.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
This is one of the city's applications for the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, uh, Program being administered through the Texas General Land Office. And the first one, um, this one is Virginia Street Area Drainage Improvements, and there are two sites indicated on the map in your packet. Site one improvements include total street reconstruction and adjustment of existing manhole covers and valve box covers to final pavement grade and cleaning of the existing storm sewer system in an effort to improve drainage in these areas. Site two improvements include reshaping, regrading the existing ditches on both sides of South Reynolds from Angelina Street to Alvyar Street, replacing existing culverts and driveways, installation of safety and treatment structures, and construction of a drainage equalizer structure to allow drainage to flow across South Reynolds Street into an exist- existing ditch. And as the mayor read the caption, the estimated total project cost is $7 million, um, $7,012,315.75. And of that total, $6,942,192.60 is the CDBG grant amount we're applying for. And then the 1% match is the $70,123.15. Applications are due next week, October 28th. Uh, in your packet, there are numerous, um, documents to be executed and sent back to the consultant who's preparing the application with us.
One thing to note that is, uh, some of these projects you'll see, uh, more than once because there are different pockets of money and we're, we're, you know, we're casting our net as far as we can. And so there may be some duplicates. And if we, you know, if we do get awarded, we'll have a backup on some of those. Uh, but we don't want to not apply for the ones that we need. So that's why you'll see this, well, you're going to see this again down the, in another agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Molina, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Mr. Burke?
No question.
Okay. Mr. Chris?
Sorry about that. I got it on the wrong pipe here. No, no, thank you.
Okay. Um, I have a question just on, on clerical. On page 159, I'm noticing on the, on the form, and it could be right, I just want to double check, it has I and then printed name of elected official. Is that correct?
On which?
Michael Espinoza?
Which form?
Uh, one, page 159? Because if it's supposed to be Michael Espinosa, it's completely wrong. And he's not an elected official.
Oh, yeah.
And it says mayor or county judge on the?
Yeah, it's on the very last page. So they, they put that on there. But, uh, I know a lot of times, some of these, um, they'll, they'll want, um, the city manager sign it. Depends on, uh, and, and the, the grant people will want it different ways. But that is a misspelling if, uh, either way, we will correct that. But is it, is this one where they want the, the elected official signing or the city manager?
Um, they put your name, but I'll, I'll confirm since it does say elected.
Right. And he's not.
But that's how it.
But, but we had one the other day that had the same thing and Grantworks was working it and they said that, that they, they wanted the city manager's name because of the ability to expend the funds.
I just want to make sure we don't waste time in submitting and it's incorrect.
Thank you.
Because it's.
Small technicality.
Yeah. And I, I did notice on, on another form that it was like that. And I just want to make sure that.
We're, we're getting, uh, taken care of with.
And the title at the bottom says title, mayor or county judge. So, just to make sure we can do that ASAP and do what we need to do to make sure we don't waste time. But I'm good. I think it's much needed in that area. It's long overdue.
And this is the second one we've applied for in this area for this grant, not this, not this grant, but for that.
Right. We, the, as, uh, Mr. Sparseth said, you'll see the similar projects under different funding programs because we're trying to see, first of all, which ones, um, we're competitive in applying for. And then secondly, when they make awards and do we get one? And if so, what's the match and, uh, the timeframe? Uh, so we're trying to look at all these different funding sources. So this is CDBG through the General Land Office. And then you'll see it again, the next.
Texas Water Development Board?
Texas Water Development Board Flood Infrastructure. And then we also, you're right, this is the second, GLO is the second. The first one was Disaster Declaration 4416.
No, I think it's good.
Pintas Creek and Virginia Street.
I think it's good, like, like.
One of them's going to hit. We're putting three out there. One of them's going to hit.
And if, and if we bring in anything, we're better off than we were before.
And we're still waiting to hear about the DR 4416.
Great job. Because I know it takes a lot to submit for the same project.
We have a good team and, and we appreciate all the hard work, uh, that y'all do in supporting us. And then, um, um, the folks on our team are, are really great.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. And you are part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion at this time if nobody has questions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing, A, the submission of a Community Development Block Grant CDBG Mitigation Program application to the Texas General Land Office for Virginia Street Area Drainage Improvements for an estimated total project cost of $7,012,315.75. B, the mayor and the city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorize representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program. And C, authorizing, uh, and committing the required $70,123.15 in matching funds.
Mayor, can I, can I make one amendment? We need to use the word resolution in there, in the form of a resolution, as an amendment.
In the form of a resolution?
Yeah.
Amendment to say in the form of a resolution?
Yeah, because he, he let that off.
Okay.
You want to say it again? We're good.
And just accepted, yeah.
Accept the amendment of?
Accept your amendment.
Okay.
And I'll second it then.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Chris, put the amendment of, in the form of a resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion stands as stated. Thank you. Agenda item 17, discuss, consider and act upon a resolution authorizing the submission of a Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program application to the Texas General Land Office for Pintas Creek Drainage Improvements for an estimated project cost of $4,453,426.50. B, the mayor and the city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorize representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program and authorizing, committing the required $44,534.27 in matching funds.
Mayor and council, this is our second project to submit under the General Land Office, uh, Funding Program. And this is the Pintas Creek Drainage Improvements Project. You'll see before you in your packet, the, some of the historical, uh, issues we've had with drainage in that area. And to mitigate, uh, the deficiencies in drainage, uh, this project includes, um, several tasks, cleaning, regrading, reshaping of the Pintas Creek Drainage Ditch, uh, to restab- to reestablish the ditch flow line, improving the ditch conveyance and providing positive drainage from North Texas Boulevard to approximately 900 feet southeast of Flornoy Road. Uh, also the addition of an underground storm system from Highland Avenue at Pintas Creek Ditch to Freer Place. Portions of Freer Place, Josephine Drive and Highland Avenue will be reconstructed to facilitate positive drainage and the installation of the underground storm system to outfall into the Pintas Creek, uh, Drainage Ditch. Um, again, there's a 1% match. The estimated total project cost is $4,453,426.50. And of that total, $4,408 dollars, eight, $408,892.23 is the CDBG grant being applied for. And the $44,534.27 is the local match. And, uh, we'll get the last page corrected on this packet.
Perfect. Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Molina?
I'm sorry, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And if we'll just note, uh, page 176, same as the one before. I'll entertain a motion at this time, counsel.
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of a resolution authorizing a submission of a Community Development Block Grant CBD, CDBG Mitigation MIT Program Application to the Texas General Land Office for Pintas Creek Drainage Improvements for an estimated project cost of $4,453,426.50. The mayor and the city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorize representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program and authorizing committing the required $44,534.27 in matching funds.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Molina. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Same sign. All right. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item 18, discuss, consider and act upon adopting a resolution, A, ratifying the submittal of an application for financial assistance from Texas Water Development Board through the Flood Infrastructure Fund to provide for the cost of a master drainage planning study, authorizing application for financial assistance in an amount not to exceed $241,500, designating the city manager as the authorized representative of the city to submit the application for financial assistance and to execute such documents as may be required in connection with the preparation and filing of the application for financial assistance and the TWDB rules, authorizing other individuals and firms to assist in the preparation and submission of such application and authorizing them to appear on the behalf of and represent the City of Alice before any hearing held by the TWDB in its review and consideration of the application.
Mayor and council, we first brought this project to, to you, uh, May 29th and asked for your authorization to submit an abridged application. Um, we, that was submitted and, uh, we heard back from Texas Water Development Board, we were invited to submit a full application and had to submit an, uh, an intent to apply by September 30th. And then the app, full application was due yesterday. So that's why we're asking you to ratify, uh, the submission. Well, we've been working with an engineering consultant, uh, in putting the application together. And this drainage, uh, master drainage, um, planning study is necessary, um, so we can continue planning for and applying for funding to address the drainage needs throughout the city. Currently, we. Currently, we don't have a current drainage planning study. And so, there's a need for one. And we're eligible, when Texas Water Development Board prioritized the list, it showed that we're eligible for up to $217,350 in grant funds, and leaving $24,150 as local match.
Mr. Molina, any questions?
No, no questions.
No questions? Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
No question.
All right, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of adoption of a resolution ratifying the submittal of an application for financial assistance from Texas Water Development Board through the Flood Insurance Fund to provide for the cost of a master drainage planning study, authorizing application for financial assistance in an amount not to exceed $241,500, designating the city manager as the authorized representative of the city to submit the application for financial assistance and to execute such documents as may be required in connection with the preparation and filing of the application for financial assistance and the TWDB rules, authorizing other individuals and firms to assist in the preparation and submission of such application, and authorizing them to appear on behalf of and represent the City of Alice before any hearing held by the TWDB in its review and consideration of the application.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item 19, discuss, consider and act upon adopting a resolution, A, ratifying the submittal of an application for financial assistance from Texas Water Development Board through the Flood Infrastructure Fund to provide for the cost of Pintas Creek at Sunset Drive and Virginia Street drainage improvements, authorizing application for financial assistance in an amount not to exceed $372,500, designating the city manager as the authorized representative of the city to submit the application for financial assistance, and to execute such documents as may be required in connection with the preparation and filing of the application for financial assistance, and the TWDB rules, authorizing other individuals and firms to assist in the preparation and submission of such application, and authorizing them to appear on behalf of and represent the City of Alice before any hearing held by the TWDB in its review and consideration of the application.
Mayor and council, again, this is the Pintas Creek and Virginia Street drainage improvements, but this is under the TWDB Flood Infrastructure Fund Program. And we first brought this to you at the May 29th meeting and asked for your authorization to submit the abridged application, which was done. And then, we were notified and invited to submit a full application by submitting an intent to apply by September 30th, and submitting the full application by October 19th. Evaluation of the abridged application by Texas Water Development Board identified that our, this project is eligible for up to $286,825 in grant funds, leaving a match of $85,675. And again, the application was due yesterday, and both this one and the previous one were submitted yesterday, so we're asking for you to ratify the submission.
Okay. Council, any questions? Mr. Burke?
No question.
Mr. Chris? Mr. Molina?
No, no questions.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time?
I'd like to move for the adoption of a resolution ratifying the submittal of an application for financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board through the Flood Infrastructure Fund to provide for the cost of Pintas Creek at Sunset Drive and Virginia Street drainage improvements, authorizing application for financial assistance in the amount of not to exceed $372,500, designating the city manager as the authorized representative of the city to submit the application for financial assistance and to execute such documents as may be required in connection with the preparation and filing of the application for financial assistance and the TWDB rules, authorizing other individuals and firms to assist in the preparation and submission of such application, and authorizing them to appear on behalf of and represent the City of Alice before any hearing held by the TWDB in its review and consideration of the application.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Molina, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion stands as stated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Thank you for all your work. Agenda item, Ms. Bowen, would you like to come back in now? Sorry. There she is. I'm going to proceed, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Agenda item 20, here, status report on September 2020, month and financial statements and summary of funds and delivery of September 2020 check registers.
Good evening, mayor and council. I will be presenting the September financials tonight for Mr. Damals.
Vanessa.
Hello. First, we will begin with the general fund revenues, which is on exhibit A. The total revenue collected for general fund is $10,878,201, which is 90%. This is the end of our fiscal year, so we should be at 100%. The first column we have is the property taxes. We budgeted $2,911,584. And year to date, we are at $2,859.471. This one is missing three payments, so we will have a little bit more that will be added. We just haven't received those payments yet. On exhibit B, the total property collection is $3,941,372. Please keep in mind, though, that this chart does include MNO and INS, and the general fund is only MNO. So back on exhibit A, the next column is our sales tax. $5,471,051 was budgeted for fiscal year 2020, and year to date is at $4,529,357. If we can go to exhibit C, this exhibit will show the comparison of budget versus actual. August, sales tax payment did come in at $375,532. This payment has not been recorded for the September financials. We will be lacking one more month to finish the fiscal period. The next slide, which is exhibit D. That's okay. This one will show the actual 2019 versus the actual 2020. 2019 through the month of August was at $5,929,264, and 2020 year to date is at $4,904,889. The difference between the two years is $1,024,375. Now, back on exhibit A. The next column is the occupational mixed beverage tax. We budgeted $44,200. Year to date is at $26,086. This is missing the last quarter of revenue, and we should be receiving that this month. The next column is franchise license and permits. We budgeted $1,018,300. Year to date, we're at $948,504. Like the previous one, this is missing some final payments for end of year for electric, gas, telephone, and cable. These payments will be coming in this month and next month. Intergovernmental revenue collections is at 62%. Charges for services is at 157%. Fines and forfeits is at 81%. Miscellaneous revenue collections is at 105%, and interfund transfers, end of the year at 95%. Any questions on the revenues? No? Exhibit E will display the general fund expenses. Year to date, we have expensed $12,207,878. This is about 101%. I'm just going to touch on a few departments. Police Department expensed 98% of their budget, so they were a little bit under. General Service was a little bit over, but this was due to the Rialto demolition, which was kind of an unforeseen expense. Civil Service is also over budget. This one was due to attorney's fees. Command Center was over budget. This was due to some COVID expenses. And Fire Department was a little bit over at 101%. Any questions on any general fund expenses?
Council, any questions?
You said general service was over by how much?
That one... We ended the year at 107%. The actual variance over was $61,681. But that wasn't all Rialto. I think Rialto...
I was going to say that.
No, it wasn't all.
Okay.
But Rialto was kind of the biggest one that kind of...
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next, on exhibit F, this will show the revenues versus expenditures for each fund. General Fund at the moment has a loss of $1,329,676. Now, please remember, this is missing two months of sales tax, some property taxes, and several franchise fees. Solid Waste has a loss of $115,704. Utility Fund shows a surplus of $45,565. Airport Fund shows a loss of $30,961. This does include the transfer from the General Fund. Golf Course has a loss of $8,311. This also includes a transfer from General Fund. The Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund shows a surplus of $82,678. It's a surplus, but it's still missing the final quarter also. Multi-Use Complex shows a loss of $9,458, and this is including the transfer from General Fund. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
No.
Okay. The final slide is exhibit G. This slide shows the 12-month comparison. On the General Fund, September 2019, we ended the year at about $473,000. September 2020 is negative 1.3 million. Solid Waste Fund 2019 was at $247,000, and 2020 is a negative $116,000. Utility Fund in 2019 was at negative $49,144, and in 2020, we're at positive $45,565. Airport Fund 2019 was at a negative $36,000, and in 2020, we're at a negative $31,000. Golf Course Fund 2019 was at $31,000, and in 2020, we're at a negative $8,300. Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund 2019 was at $103,000, and in 2020, we're at $83,000. And finally, Multi-Use Complex 2019 was at $29,000, and in 2020, we're at a negative $9,500. Any other questions?
Council, any questions? Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Chris? Mr. Molina? Ms. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vanessa.
Good job.
Thank you.
Agenda item 21, delivery of updated grant report.
They're in the books.
They're in the books. Thank you, Ms. Odie. We appreciate that. Agenda item 22, adjourn and/or consider and act upon adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Seconded by Ms. Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion stands as stated. The time is now 7:35. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all here, and everyone watching at home, stay safe. Thank you, city staff, for all you do. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.